Okay, are we ready? All right, I'll just do a check. Test, test, one, two. Okay. All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the monthly meeting of the City of Des Moines zoning board of adjustment. This board has the power, under Iowa law and the zoning ordinance of the City of Des Moines, to hear and make decisions on requests for variances and exceptions from the regulations in the zoning ordinance, to review conditional use requests, and to consider appeals from any decision of city staff in the administration of the zoning ordinance. The members of this board are citizens of the City of Des Moines. They have been appointed to this board by the city council. The board members are volunteers and receive no compensation for their public service. I'm going to take a moment here to introduce our board members today. Pardon me. On the audience's right is Tom DeCio. Next to him is Dave Gare. Next to Dave is Rhonda Sodillo. Hello, Rhonda. On the audience's left is Justin Gross. Next to him is Marla Jones. And I'm Mel Pins, the board chair. And I think we'll have a seventh member arriving shortly. Is that correct?
Nathan will not. He's out sick.
Nathan's out today. Okay, so I have six members present here today. I'll introduce our city staff who will be assisting us today. To my left is Gary Guidelock, legal counsel for the zoning board of adjustment. I'll introduce our city staff who will be assisting with presentations and process. Standing at the podium now is Frank Dunn Young, senior city planner. Bert Dross, deputy planning administrator. Sue Ann Donovan, deputy director of neighborhood services. Shreyosi Chakrabarti, city planner. Catherine Drejas, city planner. And Eric Lundey, zoning enforcement officer. I'm going to go over the meeting's procedure here. For some of you, this may be your first time in front of the board of adjustment. You may hope it's your only time, but we'll work you through the process here. So I'm going to explain how the hearing works, but you don't have to memorize everything. We'll help you along through each agenda item. So don't worry about the process. We'll guide you through this. But for some background here, the zoning board of adjustment is a quasi-judicial board. This hearing will be conducted within the procedures and format as authorized by Iowa law and this city's ordinances. The meeting is open to the public. The meeting is being recorded by both audio and video for a legal record of these proceedings. The board members have each received a copy of the agenda and the staff recommendations. The board is required to base its decision on each item upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief sought by the applicant. The law applicable to each case has been identified in the written staff report. If the facts, as determined by this board, demonstrates that the criteria established by law for granting the relief has been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the requested relief. Each item will be announced in the order that it appears on the agenda unless there are any changes to the agenda. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda, which is our first portion of the agenda, are not planned to be individually discussed. Rather, they will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless the appellant does not agree to the conditions recommended by staff, or if there's an individual present in the audience, or a member of this board that requests the item be removed from the consent agenda so that a full discussion on the matter can occur. And I will come back to the consent agenda here in just a moment and work you through that. For our regular portion of the agenda, after an agenda item is first announced, city staff will first begin by giving a brief overview of the appeal. They will present any written comments that have been received prior to the hearing. Then the applicant or their representative will be allowed up to 10 minutes to present their appeal. We'll then move to the public comment portion of the hearing for that agenda item. Anyone wanting to speak in support of, in opposition to, or even in neutrality of the appeal will be allowed up to five minutes each to present their comments. This will be their one and only opportunity to address the board for the agenda item at hand. Once all concerned citizens have spoken regarding the agenda item, the board will then ask any additional questions of city staff. Finally, the applicant will be given three more minutes for a rebuttal or closing comments if they so choose. All speakers must speak only from the podium here at the center of the room. You see the microphone there and the computer screen. So when it's your appropriate turn or you're recognized, you will begin your presentation by first giving both your name and address. That address can be your place of business or residence as appropriate in the event you may need to be contacted for legal notices related to the outcome of this appeal. All speakers are requested to remain courteous and to focus their comments only upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law has been satisfied. Speakers are asked to ensure they're respectful of time considerations, and if necessary, the board chair will limit further comments by a speaker if they exceed their time limitation. Once all matters have been addressed, the board chair will close any further public comment on the agenda item, and the board will immediately deliberate the request, and we will make a decision on the appeal here today. Please note that it always takes at least four affirmative votes for any zoning appeal to gain approval. If your appeal is approved today, we'd ask that you wait until about one week from today's hearing if you'd need to contact the city's permit and development center to obtain any necessary building permits or sign permits that are related to your appeal. This will allow the decision of this board to be documented in the form of a decision and order. That document will then be provided to you and city staff for the record. Any appeal that is approved by this board must be implemented, constructed, or otherwise utilized within two years of the date of the decision of this board, or such approval shall expire. Finally, the decisions of this board can only be appealed in the Iowa district court. If you believe you've been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations for future considerations. All material written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation is a part of the permanent record. If you plan to present anything today, plans, photos, drawings, documents, that you already didn't give copies to city staff, you'll need to do so before you leave the hearing. You can contact city staff after the hearing if you'd like a copy of anything presented today. Finally, just some quick housekeeping items for the hearing. Please avoid any undue conversation in the audience to limit distractions during the hearing that's in progress. You're all doing a great job. Please ensure your cellphone has been silenced. So far, so good. And if you need to use the restroom, just walk through the doors here. You don't have to go back downstairs. Walk past the staircase. There's restrooms on your left. And subject to the time of the hearing, we'll take a five-minute break in the meeting around 3:00 or 3:30 if needed. And once your agenda item is completed, you're welcome to leave the hearing, or you can stick around and listen to the other ones. So speaking of the hearing, we'll take a look at our agenda for today to see if we do have any changes to the printed agenda. So we'll have Frank come up, and we'll see. Frank, do we have any changes for today?
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Staff is requesting that item... Item four, please move to the consent agenda. The proposed use is consistent with the I-2 district. We did not receive any comment cards against. We did receive a comment card in support of.
And Frank, is the applicant okay with the staff recommendations or any conditions?
That is correct. I've spoken with the applicant. They are agreeable to all of the conditions of approval.
Okay, all right. Is there any member of this audience that would not be in favor of this board granting approval by moving this item to the consent agenda? If you have any concerns about that item, we can move it to the consent agenda. I would just need you to raise your hand. So was there anybody who had a concern with item four, 3301 East Granger? You can't address the board, but do you have a concern if we were to approve that item?
Well, I want to go back to the other one. I have my hand down, but...
Nope. We're just talking about moving an item to the consent agenda, so please sit down for the moment. If your interest is not in item four, we're looking to move that to the consent agenda. So for the consent agenda, anybody in the audience with a concern about item four? Seeing none. Board members, unless there's questions or any concerns, would there be a motion to move item four to the consent agenda?
Aye, so move.
All right. Moved by Marla. Seconded by Rhonda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we'll move item four to consent. All right. Any other changes in the agenda? We're good? Okay. All right, so now, okay, we have two items then on the consent agenda. Item one is a zoning exception request in the vicinity of 5604 Flewer Drive related to the Des Moines Airport. Is there anybody in the audience that would object to granting the requested zoning exception? I thought this was your concern.
No, it had to do with the liquor licenses for... I thought that one had to do with...
No, that's on our regular portion of the agenda. We're just reviewing the consent portion of the agenda at this time. When we get to that item, we'll announce the address and proceed accordingly. So is there anybody in the audience that would object to this board granting approval for the zoning exception request in the vicinity of 5604 Flewer Drive, as well as item number four, once again, a conditional use request at 3301 East Granger? If there's anybody in the audience that would object to items one or four, raise your hand. It's almost the second call. Seeing none. Board members, we have items one and four in consent. If there's any questions or concerns, please raise those. If none, would there be a motion to grant approval? All right. Motion by Rhonda. You want a second on that, Tom? No? Only Tom. All right. I'm going to call that for a second by Tom. All those in favor of granting the requested exceptions and conditional use, items one and four, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries six, four. If you are here for items one or four, they have been approved, subject to you meeting the staff recommendations and conditions as presented. We'll get you a copy of the decision and order next week on those. So thank you for coming in for items one and four. All right. This will move us to the regular portion of the agenda where we will hear the appeal. We'll start with item number two. That's a reconsideration of a conditional use at 216 Court Avenue. And in this process, this is a process in this case, the city in essence would be the appellant, so the city will make their presentation as the appellant first.
Chair members of the board, Sue Ann Donovan, deputy director of the Neighborhood Services Department in front of you on behalf of the zoning enforcement division of the Neighborhood Services. We are here regarding 216 Court Avenue, and we're here for reconsideration of the conditional use approval that was granted in 2006. As you may remember, the conditional use approval was granted for the entire building. It has five bars in it at this point, or had five bars in it, and we are bringing it back for reconsideration due to at least 60 police calls over the last year. We have talked to the owner of the bar, and we have negotiated some conditions that they are in agreement with, which I will present later. This is your consent map.
Sue Ann?
Yes.
So when they're saying that they're in favor, they're saying they're in favor of the...
Reconsideration.
Okay.
Yep. They're in favor of what I brought before you, which is a reconsideration of the conditional use approval for that building. So I'm going to quickly, I only have 10 minutes, so I don't want to belabor the crime findings at this location, but you have in front of you in the packet the percentage of cases by location at 216 Court, broken down by the police department, as to the percentages of police calls attributed to each of those bars. In Exhibit Two, we have a graph that shows cases by category for the firm. On it, it's showing attempted murder, disorderly conduct, theft.
I'm not seeing that. I don't...
Where is that at? So they're up on the screen, maybe? So here are cases for attributed to the firm. Here are cases attributed to the district. Again, you see disorderly conduct, assault, criminal mischief. Exhibit Four shows alcohol offenses, criminal mischief, assault for Beer Can Alley. Chummy cases is Exhibit Five, again, assault with a weapon, harassment. Shags is Exhibit Number Six, and it shows a public indecent exposure. That was an event that happened in the bar in September of 2022. Attempted murder dispute. The exchange cases, again, disorderly conduct, assault. Exhibit Number Eight is court cases, or the area cases, and you have alcohol offense, disorderly conduct, assault. Exhibit Nine, South Stairwell, disorderly conduct. North Stairwell, you have assault, that's Exhibit Ten. Exhibit Eleven, in the South parking lot, you have assault with a weapon. Just to go through Exhibit Twelve, A through Q very quickly, you have a report on 11-6, 2022, the firm arrested somebody for disorderly conduct. 7-11, 2022, there was an assault with a weapon. It was attributed to activity in the firm, and then the suspect was subsequently arrested. 4-3 of 2022, you have an attempted murder that originated in the firm, where seven or eight shots were fired, striking one victim. For 12A, just briefly, you have a couple incidents. 8:14 was harassment with an arrest. 8:21, 22 was a theft, and somebody was removed from the property for disorderly conduct. 12B, disorderly conduct on 9/25, 2022. Apparently, the suspect and the firm punched a security guard and was subsequently arrested. 10-5 of burglary, 10:22, a large group removed for fighting, ultimately arrested for harassment of a police officer and trespass. 12C, 10:29, 22, you had an assault. 10:30, 22, disorderly conduct, multiple fights had broken out around the firm in Suite 203. 11-3, 2022, criminal mischief, a fight on the stairs. 11:29, 2022, security broke up, two separate fights on that night. 12D, 2-6, 2022, female was inadvertently tased by security while they were trying to break up a fight. On 2-19, 2022, there's a trespass because somebody refused to leave the site of the firm, and 203, it was subsequently arrested. 2-27, 2022, disorderly conduct, refusing officers' orders to leave, arrested for disorderly conduct. 11:10, 2022, assault, somebody became verbally abusive. 2-26, 2022, another fight. 3-18, 2022, a person that was in the district believed she was drugged. It was going to go get a blood test. 12F, we have an assault on 4-16, 2022 with arrest. 4-28, 2022, an alcohol offense where somebody was subsequently arrested for public intoxication. 5-16, 2022, that was a theft. 6-25, an assault, which somebody was subsequently arrested in the district. 12G, we have 6:25, 2022, an assault with an arrest. 7-8, 2022, an assault and arrest. 7-8, 2022, somebody was arrested for disorderly conduct. All of these incidents were attributed to the district. 3-20, 2022, a victim was assaulted by Beer Can Alley. 5:22, 2022, suspect was identified and arrested after criminal mischief. 12I, 7-10, 2022, an assault with a deadly weapon. There was an argument inside the bar, chummies. They went outside, and somebody pulled the gun and fired one shot at the sidewalk. 12J, an assault on 7:21, 2022, an employee of chummies, which jumped outside of the bar and was taken to Mercy ER for treatment. 9/2022, there was attempted murder outside on Court Avenue outside of the bar. The suspect had originally been in Shags. 9/19, 2022, 12IL, indecent exposure. This is, again, the incident that we talked about previously, where there was an adult entertainment event at Shags in violation of several ordinances. 12M, 7-3, 2022, there was assault in the exchange. 4-16, 2022, disorderly conduct. The officer arrested somebody as a result of that. 5:22, 2022, disorderly conduct. 8:28, 2022, this is Exhibit 12N, disorderly conduct with fighting. 2-5, 2022, public intoxication, harassment, and possession of oxycodone. 7-17, 2022, assault with a weapon. A victim was shot in her parking lot of 216 Court. 12O, Exhibit 12O, 9/18, 2022, disorderly conduct, fighting in the middle of the street. People were charged with disorderly conduct. 7:15, 2022, arrested for intoxication. She became uncooperative and was arrested. 7:16, 2022, disorderly conduct outside of the bar. They were arguing on the corner of Third and Court and arrested for disorderly conduct. 8:14, there was an assault, and again, somebody was arrested for assault and injury. 12Q, alcohol offense, somebody in the street attempting to start a fight. As you can see, we have multiple offenses at this property that we believe warrant the reconsideration of the conditional use approval. The conditions that have been discussed are that they comply with the noise regulations of Chapter 42. Post information for the manager on site, post no loitering signs, litter and trash receptacles cleaned up, comply with the permit development center if they wish to pull any building permits. All persons entering the building or the suite shall show identification. All common areas and exterior of the building must have functioning cameras installed and operated by the owner of the building. Business that has a liquor license shall install and have functioning cameras showing the interior of the businesses operating during business hours. Private business offices or attached living quarters do not need cameras. And again, if we find that it's a nuisance in the future, we could, again, bring it back to the board for reconsideration.
Thank you, Bert. Trying real hard with that.
It's on the other side.
All right, so I'll give you about another 30 seconds to wrap things up there.
I am done and ready for questions.
You're good? Okay. Any questions for Ms. Donovan from the board? Justin?
Sue Ann, so if you could just kind of explain what are the different conditions that are, I guess, different than your, you know, vanilla conditions on this matter?
Correct. The differences that we have are the ID requirement, the camera requirement are the ones that are different than normally put into conditional use approvals. Those would be in addition to what you normally put in.
And you think these new additions, these new conditions are going to address the issues that you laid out in Exhibit 12?
I certainly hope that with the new conditions and with the owners being brought to the table to have these conversations, that they understand the severity of what has happened and the detriment to the Court Avenue district and the harm and the violence that has occurred because of operations in this building, that by imposing these, bringing them back to the board in this fashion, that they will take this seriously and run better businesses in the building.
Other questions for Sue Ann? Dave?
Yeah, our... Did you consider at all just that we address each one of these businesses separately with their own license, rather than have one for the whole building?
That is an option for the board.
Because I think you're hardly even slapping their hand, from my perspective, based on everything you just read. And there's been a lot of coverage on this in the paper, on the news. City staff refer to this as the binge drinking district, not the entertainment district. So I think, I see what you're trying to do here. I don't, I'm not convinced this is going to change anything, other than buys them another chance.
That is certainly up to the board.
So...
This was a starting point through negotiation. Certainly respect the board's...
Can I ask you who all negotiated this with you? Was it the building owner, or was it each one of the businesses?
This was negotiated by the city manager's office with the building owner.
And how many of the businesses are going to stay in business down there that are currently in there?
I believe that Shags has served their 14-day suspension. I believe that Shags has served their 14-day suspension. I was under the impression, and you'll have to ask the owner's attorney, that they were going to not open Shags again. Just to point out, the owner of the building actually owns and operates Shags. So there's kind of a tie there.
And that's the guy you're negotiating all these new conditions with?
Correct. The bars on the upper floor, which is 203, and the exchange have, I believe, terminated their leases and are moving elsewhere. And Chummy's has released their space and will be opening somewhere else.
Okay.
All right, that's great. Thanks.
Good questions, Dave. And Sue Ann, just for some clarification on a couple points. I appreciate Dave's questions. In general, when a conditional use is issued to operate a tavern in an otherwise legal zoning district, that's issued for the property. It's not normally issued like, you know, for this bay or that floor, that's right? It's usually issued for the address of the property. Is that correct?
When this came into the board in '06, this was a little bit different than normal. And they asked for the whole building because at the time they wanted to be able to maneuver different tenant spaces within the building easily. So they had Peoples in there. They had a restaurant on the first floor. They wanted to have mobility. In other buildings with suites, we have separated out and given agreements just for particular suites within suite configurations such as this.
You're saying in other buildings since that time?
Correct.
So, and again, to summarize, you did state the board can consider the, you know, the conditional use for the whole property and the conditions presented, or potentially, we could break some things down if we wanted to. Is that correct?
This is up to the board, right?
Right, true. But as far as, I guess I'll address our attorney. We would have the authority, if we so choose, to potentially address either a suite, a floor, or individual operators separately at the same address. Is that correct?
In the, you know, the procedural posture where we are with this as a reconsideration of the existing conditional use permit, I, you know, the board has the authority to amend the conditional use approval. And I think as long as we could find a way to accurately describe the footprint of each bay essentially, I think that that's probably within the board's purview.
And I'm not necessarily suggesting that to my colleagues. I just wanted to ask for clarification.
Well, and just from my perspective, this is, all this is, is a strip center stacked up. That's how I'm looking at it.
Sure.
Because a strip center's got, typically they have one owner, and there's multiple businesses. So I would venture a guess that each one of these guys has a lease. Each one of these has an address. Each one of these guys has a footprint. And so I think it'd be easy to separate it if we so, if we want to go down that road. I don't know.
Sure. All right. So Sue Ann, just a statement and then a question for you here. You know, as I state in the preamble, we're all citizens of the city of Des Moines. So we have eyes and we have ears. We know there's some weather alerts today. So we've canceled another appointment after this hearing. So we're just people. We may hear and see things. But, you know, if we hear or see something about a specific property or a specific location, either in the news, the newspaper, social media, when we come to a hearing, we make our decisions based on what's presented for the facts at the hearing itself. So I want to go back, Sue Ann, to some of the data that you presented. You know, I'm not a stranger to a bar. We've all seen a bar fight. I try not to be in those. But by the same token, you know, every once in a while, yeah, a bar fight, an assault at a bar. But when I heard you say things like assault with a deadly weapon, gunfire, street fighting, attempted murder, adult entertainment, and exposure, which are not allowed, haven't seen that one before, would you say based on, generally speaking, your experience, based on the number of these cases, violations, whatever you want to call it from the police department or you, by their quantity, gravity, severity? I mean, is this something that is pretty outstanding to you from your experience?
In my experience, this is outstanding. I was relatively shocked when I read the police reports and the synopsis, which has been provided to you.
And that's why your staff rationale is that the operation of the business has become a nuisance, has exhibited a pattern of violating our previous conditions, and that's why you're in front of us. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, so the way this works, and Gary, you can help me out here as need be. So a representative of the conditional use holder at this address can now address the board. They have up to 10 minutes, but that will be the person who is representing the conditional use holder, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So whoever that may be, spotlight's on you, sir. We just need your name, address is appropriate. You've got up to 10 minutes.
Sure, thank you. That person is me. My name is Alex Johnson. I'm an attorney with the Brown Winnick Law Firm here in Des Moines. We're at 666 Grand Avenue, Suite 2000. And I represent Court Center LLC. They are the owners of the building that you know as 2-16 Court Avenue. Thanks for your time on this beautiful day. And because of the weather, the principals of Court Center, who wanted to attend, made the decision not to attend. They're from northeast Iowa. But I can assure you that they are paying attention, and they have been working diligently on these issues since they rose to the surface in the last year. A little bit of background, because all these, all this information is very alarming when you think about it. You also need to understand, I think, in isolation, it's hard to track an attempted murder to a bar, for instance. But we take all of these things very seriously, and we have done that. Court Center LLC bought the building known as 2-16 Court Avenue about one year ago. So to address, I think what you were referencing, they inherited seven leases. There's one conditional use permit for that building. There were seven leases. And each of those leases is different. They were entered into at different times. They have different conditions. So each has a separate set of rights and obligations. Court Center LLC is obviously very aware of the issues that are problems now. They weren't necessarily that aware when they purchased the building, for better or worse. They take them all very seriously, and to some extent, penalties have already been imposed. Ms. Donovan referenced the shutdown of Shags. And Shags is unique in that it was also owned by my clients, and that has been shut down completely. Some tenants, since this process has started, are gone now. Others may leave. It's a very fluid situation. But as I'm sure you understand, each of those tenants has rights under the terms of their lease. So we're attempting to work with all of them and work with the city and all of the invested parties, the partnership, the Des Moines Police. My clients have reached out to every organization that they felt was invested in this proceeding and in Court Avenue. Frankly, it's, I mean, it's the entertainment district of Des Moines, and they want to make sure that it is respected and seen in a positive light. You know, if you open up partnership information or Des Moines, city of Des Moines information about entertainment, you'll see most likely the building that is known as 2-16 Court Avenue on those pieces of information. So we respect that, and we want to honor that. As I said, this is a very fluid situation with a lot of moving pieces. But my clients have been navigating these difficult waters along with the city and the police. And we believe that the recommendation that's in front of you, along with the changes that have already been made, are a fair resolution of this issue. They allow for a path forward for all the parties. It does not divide the conditional use permit. It continues with one conditional use permit for the entire building. But my clients are committed to continue working with the parties that they've been working with, the city, the police, the partnership, Ms. Donovan and her team, to make sure that this type of stuff does not happen again. Obviously, we can't, we don't have a crystal ball. We can't promise that. But we're making changes based on the recommendations that you have before you to hopefully create a better space. My clients have already made financial sacrifices in the interest of moving this forward. Not to say that they shouldn't have. But they're trying to improve the environment of 2-16 Court. We appreciate all the hard work of the city folks, the police, all the partners and the invested parties. And we share the city's vision for 2-16 Court Avenue moving forward. We believe that the recommendation you have to amend the conditional use permit that's been proposed and agreed to by us in the city is fair. It allows us all to move forward with the same goal of making Court Avenue a great entertainment district, a safe place where anyone can go to experience a good nightlife in Des Moines. That's all I have on that. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right. Thank you, Alex. As you mentioned, yeah, anybody have any questions?
Justin?
Thank you. Alex?
Yes.
You said besides stipulated amendment, there were some other things that were taken, some actions that were taken. What are you referring to?
Well, specifically, the penalty that Shags was penalized and lost their, I think they were shut down for 14 days. And they agreed, we agreed to shut that place down permanently as a result of that activity. And that was the, on the spreadsheet of charges, that was the indecent exposure issue. And that's, it was kind of out of character for everything else that was listed there. It was an isolated incident. It doesn't make it any less awful. But that led to the shutdown of Shags.
Okay. And then just a follow-up question. You mentioned that there was possibly other tenants that are gone. Is that the only one that you were referring to, Shags? Or is there some other tenants?
No, there are others that are gone. And if I screw these names up, you'll have to forgive me. But Beer Can Alley is gone. Suite 203 has moved out. I am not sure if Chummy has moved out. I know that you mentioned that, but we're working with a lot of these tenants. Like, as I said, they have rights under the terms of their leases. So there may be some more changes. That's just what I know as I stand here today.
Thank you.
Others?
Was there any mention, Alex, of any steps to keep weapons out of the building?
Excuse me?
Any discussion with the city about keeping weapons out of the building? Like a metal detector?
I think all those things were discussed, and the list is what they settled on. I don't think there's ever been any agreement that weapons would be allowed in the buildings, if that's true.
I understand that. I try to keep weapons out. I don't want anybody getting hurt down there.
Yeah, for sure. And I think my client's vision of the future of the building would not contain any establishments where people would be likely bringing weapons in. And that's the vision that we have to work with the city to incorporate moving forward.
I'm not trying to be rude. I'm sure that was the vision when you set this, when it was set up originally, not to have weapons in the building. There are weapons in the building. There are fights in the building. There's alcohol in the building. It's not a safe place.
We think that the changes that we're making will make it a safe place, and...
I don't see how it's different than what was originally done.
Well, yeah, I understand your question and your concern. And it's our goal to make it safe. That there's, I can't guarantee that people won't bring a weapon into any establishment. You know, we're doing our best.
You got a history now.
Understood. And my clients are well aware of that. And that's what they're trying to work with the city on.
What about the other people, other businesses in that area that aren't in your building? They're damaged by that.
I'm glad you raised that point. We've met with some of the neighboring establishments, the owners of Johnny's Hall of Fame, some other restaurants and bars in the area, to make sure that they're on board with what we're trying to do moving forward and support our goals.
Thank you, Alex. Marla?
I just had a quick question. What kind of timeframe are these items to be completed? And for instance, you know, we talk about the functioning cameras?
I think these would be almost immediate. There are functioning cameras in many of the spaces. So it'd probably just be a matter of updating the ones that don't have those. And yeah, it'd be on a go-forward basis, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
What kind of management changes are you guys going to make? Because if you're an absentee owner, you've got local management. Obviously, they weren't paying very close attention. And so for me to get comfortable with these conditions, this is just letters on paper. The fact that the owner operated Shags is pretty telling.
There was a man, I'm sorry.
And the fact that the management that they had operating that, which represents the owner, it's pretty telling. So here again, I got words on paper here. I've got kids that go down there. I forbid them to go down there. And you know, it's a really fun district. The partnership, there's organizations in Des Moines that are trying to attract national conventions, sporting events. And that's the, to use your words, your building's pictured as a place that we should go. I'll tell you what, I wouldn't have your building on the front of anything based on what I know right now.
I agree with you.
So here again, and you know, in your job, you're doing your job to defend your client. I don't care what the weather is. Your client should be here. This is bad. It really is. So I'm really interested to see how this discussion goes. I'm all for Des Moines, but stuff like this is, to me, isn't negative. If this is what we're going to, if this is the reputation that we get to present or people see, because that's what they remember. And I don't know how cameras are going to prevent any of this stuff from happening.
Well, they're not. It's going to have to be...
And I mean, Johnny's Hall of Fame, maybe they have some of the same issues. I don't know. But this is, this needs to have some teeth in it for me to get comfortable with it. So anyway, I'll be interested to hear what everybody else has to say.
All right. Well, certainly, you know, as with any agenda item, we have a discussion amongst the board. Do we have other questions for Alex? Alex, I just got a couple quick ones here. Appreciate your clarity, your candor on your presentation. You know, I do have some of the same concerns that Dave had mentioned. You know, the owner of the property is also, was the owner of one of the bars, now closed, that even has, I believe, some state sanctions for the indecent exposure, the adult entertainment use, whatever it was called. City staff is recommending, you know, additional conditions to allow the use to continue. But that's their recommendation. And even on maybe the simplest thing on a used car lot, this board doesn't have to always accept the city's recommendations. We may decide something else. We have to make our decision on the facts within the law. That has to be defensible. But we could say, not to put words in Dave's mouth, but hey, sorry, you had a conditional use permit. This is way too egregious, and we're just going to take this away. So help me understand, a question you would be, to me, I kind of see this as, you know, as all hands on deck on the ship here. Everybody's going to have to work together at this address as tenants and bar operators, because you're either all going to swim together or you could sink together. So how do you propose to take these overall conditions and apply those to all the tenants now and in the future?
Well, I think it starts with my clients being connected with the city and all the invested partners. And that's really what has happened throughout this process. Not to beat a dead horse, but the incident with the indecent exposure was sort of the alarm bell that my folks needed to have ring in order to let them know how serious things were here. And from that moment forward, they've taken action in meeting with, you know, everyone they could meet with, you know, the partnership, all the representatives, the police. Ultimately, it's going to be up to them. They have to take charge as business owners. They have to take charge as business owners, make good relationships with their tenants, many of whom will be new tenants, and the city is well aware of the vision that my clients have for this district. But they're going to have to make good leases and good agreements with these people, and they're going to have to supervise them. And I'm confident that they will. They're experienced in what they do. Like I said, they bought this a year ago, they inherited seven leases. I don't think they fully understood the level of problems that were lurking or already here. And now they do, and they've taken, I think, aggressive action, and I think the city would tell you that they have, since they've shown the light on these things. I don't know if that answers your question completely.
Yeah, no, I'm very pleased at, because you're right. Yeah, either, you know, enough is enough, the straw that breaks the camel's back, whatever that incident kind of, okay, this is, yeah, it's time to have a come-to-the-principal's office meeting here. This isn't the first time we've had, you know, a reconsideration of a conditional use for a tavern. We've had cases where we've taken these away completely. We've had other cases where we've said, yeah, we need to renegotiate the terms just like this. But what I've said before, and maybe some have heard this and remember it, you know, if you get a second chance today, that's all you're going to get. If we would look at allowing the conditional use to continue here, these conditions sure better be changed in that, because, you know, I've been on this board a fair length of time. I might not be here next year, but if I'm here and this comes back again, that's not going to work well for me. You know, because there's kind of a point where we are all adults, and so we've got to kind of live up to our statements, reputation. It's not what we say, it's what we do, you know? But I appreciate, again, your candor, clarity on that. So, anybody else for the moment have any questions for the applicant? Okay, all right, thank you. Or the conditional use holder. All right, thanks, Alex. Okay, so the way this part of the hearing works now, just to explain it again to the audience, since this is a reconsideration of the conditional use that the city brought forward, is there anybody that wants to speak in support of the city's reconsideration and their proposal to allow this to continue with these additional conditions? All right. Come on up, sir. I do need you to state your name and address for the record. You've got up to five minutes.
Hi, my name is Larry Smithson. I live at 5095 Copper Creek Drive, Pleasant, Illinois. I respect the gentleman that just represented the building downtown, but a whole bunch of that is not true. First of all, the Court Center LLC is not a new corporation. It wasn't taken over a year ago, two years ago, whatever. I have been fed that BS also. There has been some shift in ownership in the corporation. It is also BS that they have tried to work much with the people in the building. I own the district on the main floor, and to say the least, this is a hellhole of a building, okay? It's unsafe, the stuff that goes on there, the type of businesses that's been allowed to be in there. The owners, Beer Can Alley, myself, Exchange, Chummies, we have all met several times, trying to get them to, we've met many times without them, tried to get them to set in, and their conclusion is, what can we do? Running a bar, I've been on Court Avenue for 32 years now, okay? Bar owners do need to take a little responsibility for their operations, okay? This, it isn't our fault, just doesn't cut it. With the music you play, the DJs you have, the type of atmosphere you set up definitely decides what type of clientele you're going to have. I did write something up that, before I wanted to get to them, points that I would just kind of like to read. Good bar owners want to work with the city and the police, and we do not want to be punished for what other bars do. However, as much as the city wants bars to do a good job and follow enforced laws, we need the city to do the same thing. We are living in some crazy times, and just as it's hard for the city to keep up enforcing laws, as bar owners equally are dealing with the same thing. The city needs to start letting our police do their job. And we have a lot of cowboys or troublemakers on Court Avenue, okay? And they need to be dealt with. Like I said, I've been there for 32 years. Even as little as five years ago, there would have been a paddy wagon, there would have been arrests made, they've got simple tools at hand, public intox disorderly, I think definitely should be using enforcing interference official acts. If you would see the way our policemen are treated on Court Avenue, it is unbelievable. I've seen them get behind cars, try to get away from situations. One day, I, just five or six weeks ago, I could barely wash off the windows on the side of my building because of the amount of mace that was there, because the police was trying to make an arrest, and they got jumped by about 50 people, and they opened up a big canister of mace. It was really, really unbelievable. The city equally needs to figure out, on this calling the police thing, I hear Simone Donovan telling about, she just reading a report, what was there, nothing concerned, that all the reports of the things that went on. I would like to point out, number one, out of district doing about 60,000 people a year, just the district in this building, okay? To have eight or nine calls to the police, as the most serious being some type of assault or the sound being a little bit too loud, to me is pretty minor. But we equally need to have this stuff, they need to make arrests, and we need to be in, taking care of these things as they're going on. We need to figure out if the bar owners are going to be bad or be good operators if they call the police, okay? To me, if I've got a really bad situation, I want to be able to call the police without it hurting me. If I get a situation, I got five guys in here that's going to be a trouble for a few of us to try to throw out, and I know somebody's going to get hurt or injured, I want to be able to call the police without that being held against me. And if we can get them all out without injuries, I think that's a damn good bar owner, if you ask me. I'm here to answer any questions you might have for me, being a 30-year, a 32-year veteran on Court Avenue. I'm very aware of all the bars through the years and what's going on with the crazy times we deal now with now. I would also like to let the city know and the police know that we're always willing to work with them in any way we can to make it a safe, fun place to go downtown. I think we've got a great downtown. I think it's just got a little crazy in the last year, year and a half, and I think if you guys would come up with, in the building, I think in fairness, we all have separate mailing addresses. It might be 216 Court Avenue, but it's like Suite 101, Suite 102. I think everybody should definitely have their own occupancy permits and should be held accountable without punishing a whole group or a building for what a few do. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it. If you have any questions, I'm willing to answer anything you have.
Any questions for Mr. Smithson?
So, Larry, you're a tenant?
I am. I'm a tenant on the main floor.
Okay. So, are you in like the old legends?
Yes, I am in the old legends.
So, you had some pretty serious comments about your landlord.
We have serious problems with our landlord, and we have serious problems with the conflict of interests, that our landlord is our competitor. We're not happy with the type of clientele that our landlord catered to. We're not happy with the stairways were jammed and unsafe, you couldn't even get through. Beer Can Alley, you can say he sold, he got pushed out. Nobody, me being on the first floor, I'm always observant of what's going on or going by our doorway, okay? And them little country girls just aren't going upstairs no more. His business really went to heck, kind of the stuff that's going on in the building. And Beer Can Alley used to have one great thriving business in that building that I think a lot of people really enjoyed, young and older.
So, would you say that your landlord is capable of accurately assessing a tenant if we had one permit for this whole building?
No, I do not. And I think that is proven over and over by their own operation and the way they conducted it, and the way the 203 was the firm, okay? And then all of a sudden, it had to be the 203, it had to be something a little bit different. Same DJ, same staff, same on and on and on, the old theory of putting lipstick on a pig. No, I don't think he's qualified to run that building, and I don't think he's qualified, I don't think he's qualified to run a bar, in my opinion, and I definitely don't think he's qualified to run a place that there's six establishments in it.
Wow.
And that comes with leasing a lot of buildings and owning several buildings in the city of Des Moines that has nightlife in them. We own, I own the building that Outlaws is in, the building PBR is in, the building Pints is in. I've got a new one I'm getting ready to deal with on Court Avenue because I equally almost went out of this building. Like I said, when I opened, it's a hellhole, and it's just, I will not have my name on something that I can't tell people they're going to be safe at my establishment.
So, are you going to renew your lease?
Am I going to renew my lease?
Yeah.
Right now, they're trying to buy me out, and that might be an option.
What's your interaction been with your landlord?
What's that?
What kind of interaction do you have with your landlord?
Interaction?
Yeah, they bought the, okay, so they bought the building, they bought, and...
I have his phone number in my phone. I visit with him quite often. I've approached him many times, along with a manager named Julie, and just nothing gets done. Nothing from the dumpster area that the gates get tore off that looks terrible, getting debris cleaned up around the building, just many things besides the safety. We've discussed the stairways, we've discussed the safety, we've discussed, we're all willing to chip in and try to employ policemen. Let's get some, let's get some safety here, let's get some organization, let's work together. The people in the building, even 203, as much as I thought it was a bad bar, was willing to work together to try to make some things better.
And the landlord didn't help facilitate any kind of...
I just think they're out-of-town owners, and I really don't think, in fairness, they have a clue. To run a bar is probably one of the hardest businesses there is, and you need to be very active in it. You need to know what your DJ's playing, you need to know what type of music you're playing. I mean, I play a lot of, I shouldn't say a lot, a little bit of country. I play a lot of 80s. You'll hear Cyndi Lauper, Girls Want to Have Fun, you'll hear Journey, Stayin' Alive, excuse me, God, I can't even think of it, but I play the Stayin' Alive, and I play a lot of these things.
The Bee Gees.
And I do play a little bit of the new, but none of it has the bad language in it or whatever. My DJs know that they would be drug out of my building for playing one song like that.
So, what's the answer?
Excuse me?
You're a successful business owner. What's the answer?
Well, I think it's really pretty simple. Number one, you need an owner of the building that's going to deal with tenants if he gets a bad tenant, and I won't judge him for misjudging somebody coming in that you think's going to be a good tenant, but if things starts to get bad, it's his building. He's got a lease, he should have a lease put together to where he's got the teeth in it to deal with bad situations that come up that look, hey, guys, straighten this up or you're going to be gone. We need that.
Okay, that's pretty telling. I appreciate your comments.
I'm just telling it the way it truthfully is. I'm on that floor. I work every weekend night. I hardly ever take a weekend night off to make sure our staff is safe, and it takes that. And I think being an absent owner makes that very, very tough.
Well, thanks for everything you're doing.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Larry, just a comment and a brief question. You have a lot of experience as a bar owner, definitely.
I do.
I would probably arguably say you've got the most experience of anybody I've seen in front of us over the years. So, if you remain there as a tenant, and we do approve these conditions, and if we decide they're applicable to everyone here, do you think you'll be okay with implementing this between cameras and ID checks and...
Well, I think it still depends on the owners, and I still think it's going to depend on, and I don't want to knock our policeman, I don't want to knock our city.
Sure.
But it equally, as I just said, the landlord needs to have them teeth in a lease.
Yeah.
We need that much for our city and our policeman when we call them too.
Okay.
You know, if we see somebody that we think maybe has a gun on them, or somebody says something, and we want to make that phone call to come in and get this person out without going and yelling at him, and then he's pulling it out and shooting it around in the building, cameras isn't going to really take care of anything. Cameras really kind of captures the infraction so we can watch and figure out who we want to go after.
Sure.
It's really not preventative. I think the only way it's preventative, and I suggested this, they kind of did it, but not the way I suggested. I think if you had major huge screens...
Yeah.
...in each of the landings, okay, to where the people coming in can see that they're being recorded, okay? Then it might slow down a little bit, but a lot of it's just getting a little bit of enforcement in the stairs, and I don't know if I'm going to stay or not stay. It depends probably on how good we can make it going forward.
Yeah. Well, Larry, you aren't the one here who, you know, holds a conditional use, but I always kind of say that you can tell a lot about somebody by the friends they keep. So, you know, you continue a lease here, like I said earlier, you'll have to figure out how you're all going to get along if you all want to swim together. Otherwise, you're all going to probably sink here.
I think we had a group that would get along as far as trying to make things better. I don't think we had a lot of court cooperation, and we don't have the right to go out and hang things in the hallway in cameras and do some of the things that needed to be done.
Okay. All right. Appreciate you coming down today. Thank you, sir. All right. Anybody else that wishes to speak in support of the city's position for the reconsideration of this conditional use? Anybody supporting the city? Okay. Seeing none, is there anybody who wishes to speak in opposition to us reconsidering this conditional use and the situation? Okay. I don't see any going once, going twice. Anybody just in neutrality, has to be related to the issue? It's not an open mic night, but anybody just, you know, any general concerns about the issue, not for or against, but, okay. Seeing none. Remind me, staff, what's our next step here for closing comments or rebuttal then?
Yes, the, the, well, as an opportunity to rebuttal.
The conditional use holder or the appellant, as in the city?
The conditional.
The conditional use holder. So, Alex, you kind of get to close this out and have the last comment, so you can have up to three minutes to address us with anything you'd like to say.
Thank you, and I'll try and be brief, and thank you, Mr. Smithson, for sharing your information. My clients have dealt with bad tenants elsewhere and here. That's already happened to some extent. The Court Center individuals have some of the most successful bars in the state by any stretch. The two principals, Jeff Hasman and Aaron Sherman, they don't have 32 years of experience each, but together, they have about that much. You know, Mr. Smithson probably has more experience as a bar owner than anybody in Des Moines. These guys are not here, but they're moving here. Their business is here now. They will be here. They also purchased Shags. They didn't start Shags here and create the bad issue, so I want to make that clear. They sort of inherited that mess like they inherited some of these other messes, and they're trying to clean them all up. All of these tenants have rights, and they all have obligations. My clients' building owners have rights and obligations. There have been attempts in the past to work cooperatively to address the issues on the stairs, to address security, a number of issues. Those attempts have been made. Some things have been successful, some have not. We think ultimately, this is going to come down to having good tenants and partnering with the city. And I agree with Mr. Smithson that we need to be able to rely upon the police to some extent as well. You're going to have a fight every once in a while in a bar, it's just human nature. We want to make those events very few and far between so that we're not ever before you again with a list of 50 things that could have originated in one of our tenant spaces. So, like I said, at the end of the day, it depends on good tenants. We think that we have forged a good relationship with the city, with the police, with all the invested partners here, that the recommendation that you have before you is a good path forward for everyone involved, and I would hope that you would consider that when you're making your decision today. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Alex. Alex, I do have one quick question, since it was kind of referenced and related to your closing remarks. Staff, condition number nine would require that you have functioning cameras installed, operated. If we stated that you needed to have some kind of visually obvious signage within the building, noting that cameras are present like in the entry vestibule, I'm not trying to tell you exactly where, how big, we have signage ordinances for the exterior, but if we had that as a general condition, would you be willing to work with city staff to implement something so that, yeah, because there's secret cameras like everywhere, there's probably one around here, I don't know, besides the big one. But a lot of times, yeah, that's not drawn to your attention. So, would you be okay with a reasonable condition like that?
Yeah, just so I'm clear, are you talking about a sign like, that's obvious, open and obvious, that says these premises are video... obvious that says these premises are video surveilled or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't think that would be a problem at all.
All right. Yeah, just maybe like, like legible enough in the building, not tiny, tiny print by the cash register-
Right.
-or the ID check, but yeah, yeah, pretty obvious. If I step in the door, I'm going to know there's a camera on.
Yep.
Yeah, without having to look around in the corners for one. And I realize, like, you know, Mr. Smithson said, sometimes cameras document so we can look after the fact, but if I know there's a camera on me, that sometimes can change things.
I do not think that would be a problem.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you again, Alex. Okay. Unless for some strange reason we'd have anything else we need from staff. Good? Okay, we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation. So members, time for us to talk with each other. Any overarching thoughts, big picture things? Dave, you had a pretty good summary on some of your concerns there. The city's proposal is to let them continue the use, but with conditions.
Yeah, I, I had zero comfort with that. And we've got one of the tenants that has basically said, these guys are incapable. We've tried to do things. This is one of the more experienced and successful business operators in that whole area. And if I was going to bet right now, I'd say he's not going to renew his lease because he doesn't want to be a part of that. So that, to me, that's extremely telling. Secondly, they're not capable of assessing a business and determining who is and isn't going to have their best interests in mind when they're, if it's a bar that wants to be on the second floor. So I'll tell you right now, that, I'll, I'll vote against that. But I don't know, I, I think we're, I think these guys have come back and there's like, wow, we really made a big mistake. I think that there's some consequences that need to be here, more than just this conditional use permit, in my estimation. And I, I think, I respect Larry. I've, I've been to some of his places. I, I respect his opinion and his assessment and that, that's going to carry a whole lot for me in this conversation and where I go from here with it because these guys don't live here. They don't, they're not invested in this.
Yep.
And if I, if I buy that building, I want, I need tenants because I need the money because I've got a mortgage on this thing.
Yep.
So, and the fact that they inherited Shags, if they're down here and they, they, if they had any time, if they had any time invested in this, they, they could see what kind of disruption this thing was on the weekends if they went down there. To me, it doesn't take someone to spend a whole bunch of time. So, yeah, I don't know. I'd be interested to hear what some of the other comments are of the board because this is going to be, this can be a tough one on me.
Yep. All right. Justin, you want to add something?
No, I, I mean, I, I agree with a lot of what Dave said and I've taken it to heart. And, and I think if we give them the benefit of the doubt and just say, yeah, a lot of this was inherited, I'd say, okay, then prove it. Come back in a year and we look at the same reports. We, and we compare from, you know, exhibit 12 through the next year and, and they'll be pre-telling, right? I mean, is it the same stuff? Then obviously then, then, then we need to do something different. But just for discussion purposes, I'm throwing that out there as maybe that's one of the things, we make them prove it. Give them a year.
Does it have to be a year?
I'm saying just for discussion purposes, no.
So the perspective, Justin, just for clarity, in essence, you'd be saying, yeah, we'd recommend a conditional use for the site with certain conditions with that use expiring on X date.
Exactly.
And then under the city ordinance, they can come slightly before that expiration date and ask to have it renewed.
Yep.
Right?
Right.
Yeah. Okay. That's an option. Other general thoughts?
I was just thinking, how can you separate each one out to have them all their own individual versus having just one building?
I may need some help with Gary on that. If we really wanted to do that, we would have to understand what are the individual businesses? Are there other bays sitting there empty? Which ones do we approve now? Do we have different conditions on all of them? Um, you know, I've just kind of dropped my own hint that, well, if you're all going to play together, you swim together or you sink together. And that might encourage them to play together much better. Um, you know, just like telling my landlord, you either fix the leaky pipes or I'm a moving out dude and that's all there is to it. That's the pressure. Versus, well, my apartment's fine. I don't care if yours falls apart now because, you know, you can just sink on your own. When we did approve this, it was for the property. It was for the building. There wasn't a limitation then. Now, maybe in the future it would be, if we had, you know, the Ruin Center comes up for, hey, want to have a tavern at the 600 block of Walnut? Oh, which floors? Which suites? Let's sort this out. But in all factuality, Gary, did you want to add to that?
I, I was just going to comment that I think, you know, if, even looking at subdividing the space for purposes of conditional use permit, it's not subdivided for purposes of like land ownership. There is still only the one owner and under the zoning ordinance, it, it, I mean, so even if you issued separate conditional use permits, they would all be issued to the same owner that you're dealing with now. I just wanted to bring that to the board.
Couldn't that owner come forward and have to have a specific use permit granted for an address within that building?
Right, but it would be, it would be the same owner unless, you know, unless there was some way that they divided up the ownership of, you know, like a condo of a building, for example, where there was separate ownership within that building.
But Court Center's LLC could come forward and say, suite 101A wants to be ABC Bar. And here with me today is ABC Bar operator and we could decide-
Yeah.
...we were willing or not willing to grant that. Because within, I'll just use buildings downtown. There's convenience stores that have beer and wine permits that are here to seek the permit, not the building owner. Right?
Yeah.
Well, go to the Fleming Building. There's a convenience store on the first floor. He was here to get his own permit. The owner of the Fleming Building was not here.
So the chapter 134 requires that all conditional use permits can only be accepted, applications for conditional use permits can only be accepted with the consent of all of the record title holders-
Yeah.
-including contract purchasers if that's applicable. So it, it may be a situation where that individual was here that day requesting that, but the underlying owner of the property would have at least had to consent to it.
But, okay, so I'm fine with the consent. I'm saying this owner is not capable of judging correctly who should and shouldn't get that permit because they've already exhibited that. Whether they inherited these people or not. If I own that place and I, I want to have a good reputation, I'm going to be there, like Larry said, it's work.
Yeah.
I think one of the things we should put on this conditional use permit is Larry manages the building. Want another job?
Yeah.
I'm serious.
Yeah. So Gary, I don't want to digress too far into this unless it's necessary, but, you know, if, if we decided to follow staff recommendation here with this amended conditional use with these conditions, if they wanted to expand, you know, have a quote additional bar or an expand an existing bar in the building in the future now with this conditional use, then they could do that without coming back to us. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
And that's historically what's happened at this building because I don't remember, you know, Tin Can Alley or whatever it's called, or Coyote This, or Carbon That, coming to us individually. We approved a, we approved the use at this address, the property itself. And so again, that's either, it's a whole lot simpler. On one hand, whoever's in the sandbox, you got to play well together. On the back end, if we start dividing it up, we could run into getting ourselves hamstrung with, well, now what corner of this floor did we say could and what part of that and how many square feet and who what? Ultimately, it comes down again, the property owner or whatever that record is, that person has to approve anybody that wants to come forward, ask for anything on their property that would need a conditional use, variance, exception, whatever. We kind of take that for granted because staff deals with that in the application, so we don't really ever see that. But when somebody's in front saying, hey, I want to open up, I don't know, a junkyard on, you know, Mel's property, Mel's already signed off that as the owner, he's okay with it. And then it comes to us. So again, if there's a direction somebody wants to go with a motion, we could explore a number of things. Now, the staff recommendation is to allow the conditional use here with these conditions. To me, that would apply to the whole property. It applies to everybody at it. All operations would have to meet all these conditions. If there's, you know, if somebody wants to make a motion for that, they can. If somebody wants to make a motion to say, no, I want to do something else, we can do that too. So if there's other discussion on that, that's great. If somebody feels like they'd like to make a motion to any degree, feel free to do so. We have six, we have seven great board members, but the, I reason, I see a lot of furrowed brows here is we're trying to do what's best for our businesses, our property owners, our city and our citizens. And that's, that's the challenge here. Why don't I try to see what I can float here since I'm using a lot of water analogies? I've appreciated all the testimony today. I, you know, as much as possible, I think that, you know, Mr. Johnson presented things, again, I would say as, you know, as, with clarity and candor as possible in representing his client. I do think this is, they're in the principal's office right now. This is no secret. This has been an issue. So we're here to hear this thing out, but, you know, I do not want this brought back to us anytime soon. I don't want to hear that we have another attempted murder or a murder or anything. And I know we can associate certain crimes to certain bars, but when there's a preponderance of things going on, there's, there's a cause and effect or there's usually a connection or the simplest answer is best. This has been a problem down here. But I think with these conditions and this focus on this, I think that supporting the staff recommendation at this time would be prudent. I know that Justin's talked about maybe having that a shorter term. So I'll just lead off with a motion to accept staff recommendation for conditional use at this location as presented by staff with the following amended conditions. And I'd like to add for number nine, that there shall be signage within the building clearly noting to customers that the site is under video surveillance. Would that be clear enough for the zoning administrator to implement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, would there be a second or any friendly amendments to my motion?
I've got, I've got a question. What are the hours of the, of the operations in this building?
And I think we're going to call that a kind of a, although I don't like to open it, I think that's, that's important.
Well, maybe the city-
Yeah, I call it a-
Maybe staff can answer that.
I call it the, the Cindy Smith's question. She used to serve here. She always asks about hours.
Right.
I think within the district, there's maybe a requirement, but we'll have Sue Ann answer that.
Chair members of the board, they're open until 2:00 AM.
Okay. Is, is that within the district's regulations, zoning ordinance requirements, or everybody just chooses what time they want to close?
That's when they have to stop selling alcohol under state law.
Under state law. Okay.
Okay, so.
And, and do some close earlier without getting into details?
Chair members of the board, some bars do choose to close earlier.
Okay. All right. Good enough to get us on the right track here.
Okay.
So I got a motion out here.
Yeah, and I, I'm going to make a suggestion for a friendly amendment that if these guys are that committed to this and Justin, do I think anything's going to change in a year? Yeah, I think there are going to be new tenants in there. I think Larry will be gone. Maybe there'll be some little less activity that's as negative as it is, but I'm going to say, let's make these guys close at 11 o'clock. I tell my kids, nothing good happens after 11 o'clock. Zero.
My grandma said after midnight. Come on.
Well, no, I'm just telling you because my, my, no, they go down there and they can't even get Uber rides home. So I go get them.
Yeah.
So I know nothing good happens after 11 because there's not anybody out driving them home. And they're smart enough not to do that. But anyway, if I'm going to get behind this thing, I'm going to see this thing close at 11 o'clock and let's get this, and then I'll tell you what, in a year, if they want to come back and they want to say, hey, guys, look what we've done, here's, we heard you, then great. Let, I mean, let's find out how seriously they are about wanting to clean this up because put a camera and a, and a sign up, and all due respect, no, that's fine. That doesn't mean anything. There's, there's cameras in schools, there's cameras in Walmarts, there's cameras at, on the street. That doesn't stop people. Not in my estimation.
Yeah, you're, you're talking about changing the culture-
Yeah.
-of what's going on.
So they want to play with, people being Larry's place, they can eat.
Now-
I'd say, I'd say close them, everything in that building shuts down at 11 PM, period.
Now, if this is an entertainment district on a weekend and it's closed by 11, I could barely get out of a Barnstormers game to go down and have a drink as a responsible-
Well, you know, they should have thought about that when they bought it.
Well, I-
There's other places around there. Everybody can leave their place and go next door then.
Yeah.
And maybe they can see how a good operator operates. I don't know.
I mean-
I, I, you can tell, I got a little bit of heartburn on this.
I don't, hey, that's, that's why we are all here to share our approaches.
Anyway.
I might just say, Gary, I'm curious and, you know, this isn't, this, no disrespect to Dave, but a friendly amendment that would reduce it to 11 probably would go further than what my intent was here to follow that. If I want to say, well, based on that, I don't want to make my motion then. Can I withdraw my original motion and maybe Dave could start with one?
Yeah, your motion hasn't been seconded yet.
Right.
So I think you can withdraw it. I don't see a problem with that.
I mean, he could second my motion with the friendly amendment to close at 11, but I'm like, oh, I don't, that, that wasn't my intent in my original motion.
Right. And I think as the one making the motion, I think it would be up to you to accept or reject the friendly amendment.
Ah, got it.
And so I think you can either accept it or reject it or withdraw your motion.
All right. So Dave, I might trump you for the moment unless you're going to make that as a second to my motion with that amendment. If you are, you can, but I would likely say that I'm going to withdraw my motion then. I, I think closing a place that is our entertainment district at 11, even if there have been bad players, 2:00 AM, yeah, that's pretty late. I actually didn't know it was that late, but maybe at 1:00 AM or something. Let's start clearing them out of there. I, I might be agreeable to that, but, you know, I wouldn't be agreeable to cutting somebody out of a couple of key hours of, of, of the downtown. So.
Are we so kind of discussing the friendly amendment at this?
Yeah, because I've just got an amendment to accept staff recommendations for the conditional use with the amended conditions, including my amended nine for the signage.
Well, in terms of discussion on that amendment, you know, I, I think, Dave, you're in, you're going in the right direction here and I could get behind shutting down earlier. I don't, 11 for me is too early, but I think I could do midnight. And I don't know if that's something that you could get behind as well, but I think-
All right. I mean, I'm, I'm, I mean, we're having some conversation here. We're making some progress. I could, I could live with midnight and I think it'd be great if Larry would renew his his lease. Sorry, Larry, it's closed, you can't talk, but you, you hear what we're saying. We know, we know you're a good operator.
Yeah.
I think you should also approach these guys about managing this property, if you're serious about wanting to stay there, because they probably benefit.
Do you want to look at the one-year deal?
So, yeah, and, yeah, and I would say, if you want to come back in a year, we could talk about that. And, and I'm okay with midnight. I'll vote against it if it's later than that.
Okay, yeah. Because I'd be more like, like, like 1:00, you close earlier, you quit selling. I've seen in most bars, hey, when it's last call, that's it, people start getting out of there. They just don't sit around.
Well, and to your comment about the one-year, I, I, you know, sort of unlike you, I do want them to come back here. I want them to look in us in the eyes.
And, and I'm not saying.
I want them to look at us in the eyes and say, yeah, we are making progress. Here it is, guys, you know?
We've done that recently.
Going into the principal's office and saying, look, we're doing better.
Come back and check in.
Yeah. So, so that, that would be something I'd give behind, is the one-year, the midnight, and all the rest of the conditions here.
Okay. So, so that'd be a second with a friendly amendment of also, this use shall expire one year from this date, but they could come back if they want, they have the right, and they would need to close at midnight.
Yes.
Is that clear enough for the record?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to ask the chair to restate the motion with, with the amendments added, so that we're clear on what that is before we get the second.
You, you want me to do that just once more?
If you don't mind.
Yeah, okay. So I'm making a motion for staff recommendation for conditional use for this location, but have that conditional use amended as follow, including the nine, 10, 11 items that staff has with an amendment to item nine, that they will provide prominent, noticeable, observable signage within the building, noting it's under video surveillance. And there was a friendly amendment in second by Justin to also include that they would stop selling al, be required to stop selling alcohol at midnight, and that this conditional use shall expire one year from date of issuance.
Can I make one more comment?
Under 11, Sue Ann's got that the operations business becomes a nuisance or exhibits a pattern of violating conditions. I think, I just want you to know, Sue Ann, if any of these pieces, like people in this bus, in this building, create a nuisance for you, bring it back.
Yep.
Any of them. And I hope these owners take this seriously, because these guys could be owning an empty building, if it was up to me. They wouldn't be operating the way they are.
Okay. All right. Is that clear enough for the record?
Yes, sir.
And board members, before we vote, does everybody understand at least the motion on the table? Okay, all right.
And then, do you have a second from Justin?
And that's, and that's a second, all right. All right, motion by Pins, second by Mr. Gross. Okay, all those in favor of the motion as presented, raise your right hand and say aye. One, two, three, four, five. All those not in favor, just one. So, 1:00 AM for me, but, all right, so the motion carries five to one. So the operations can continue in the building, under the conditional use provided, with the conditions that we've placed. So, yeah, we don't want to see them back in the principal's office until a year, they can come back a year from now and show us how good they're doing. Okay, copy of that will be provided within about a week with the decision in order. We'll just let everybody clear out that doesn't want to stick around here for a second, before we move on to the next agenda item.
That's the reporter, she wants Sue Ann's copy of.
We can give her a copy.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'm going to close down. Yeah. Yeah, and those comic cards over here. Okay, sorry.
No, you're fine. Do you want me to close opening the bars, too? Just to close down?
Yep.
Okay.
Hey, Sue Ann, can I borrow your attention for 60 seconds? All right, Sue Ann may or may not like this, but it's warranted and it's necessary. Before we move on to item three, I want to recognize Sue Ann Donovan from the city of Des Moines. Sue Ann is going to be retiring from the city here in mid-January after a 30-year career. She's done all kinds of fun and interesting things for the city, but over, gosh, the last 10, 15 years, she had been the zoning enforcement officer. Last few years, she'd been promoted to the deputy director of neighborhood services. But with over 30 years, I, I'm sure I can speak for everyone, but I will just speak myself on this. Sue Ann, personally, professionally, it's been a privilege to have a chance to interact and work with you, both from a neighborhood perspective and as a member of this board. You'll not only be missed, it's hard to replace somebody with their experience, talent, and unique sense of humor. So, it's just been great to work with you over the years, and I would be amiss if we didn't have a chance to say thank you, because you won't be here at our January meeting. So, so just a quick round of applause for Sue Ann. And they'll probably name some kind of zoning building after her someday, but that's up to the council and the managers, so. So, so thanks again, Sue Ann. Great to work with you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll go ahead and keep moving here today. I believe our next item up for bid is item three, a zoning exception request at 2221 Stanton Avenue.
That is correct. Chair, members of the board, Catherine Drehouse, planner for the city of Des Moines. This property is located at 2221 Stanton Avenue, which is just west of the intersection with Flora Drive. For reference, the Bebops is located there, and I believe there's a subway in this building.
Nice Chinese restaurant, too.
Oh, and a Chinese restaurant, too.
Yeah. No commercials.
The applicant is requesting a new sign for the apartment complex, and the one aspect that brings it before us today is that they are looking for a sign that is internally illuminated, which by city code is not allowed in end-zone districts. So the site photos I have start on the east entrance into the complex and end on the west entrance. So just to give you a bit of context, it's hard to see from the driveway in this current condition. I can zoom in if anyone's interested, but generally, it's located there. If you look closely, you can see the monument base. And then, from the west looking east, again, you can see the monument base. And then, just because even my eyesight's not that good anymore, you can see it's located here. So they have removed the existing sign, and they have prepared for the future sign. And then, the applicant did provide us with an aerial view showing where it would be located, which is generally in the same location as the previous sign was located. This is what they are proposing. I'll let the appellant provide any clarification required, but I believe what you see in white is generally what will be the areas that would be illuminated from within the sign. Just a little more dimensional and detail information. Again, our code does specifically state that in end-zone signs may be illuminated only by indirect illumination, and that's why we see it before us today. Practical difficulties have not been identified, and so staff is recommending denial of the request at this time. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Catherine?
Hey, Catherine, do we have other signs like this that we've approved?
Internally illuminated? No, not to my recollection, and Eric does not recall any either.
Well, did, I'm, and I'm thinking about the credit union down there on Grand?
Yeah.
That was behind that McDonald's, where they had, it was an internal light to, above.
At 62nd and Grand, roughly there?
Yeah, 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 yeah. And I want to say, there was, it was a similar request that I think we approved, not this.
It's, it is a little bit different, because it was considered a reader board sign, not internally illuminated.
And as Eric referenced, under the old zoning ordinance, not just ordinance about signs, but also zoning districts and what's allowed, because I'm assuming that maybe even the district has changed, or the.
Probably that area is predominantly commercial.
District, yeah.
Under residential still? Okay.
So Catherine, on a, on a related note, when you say an end district, N means neighborhood district?
Yes.
Which I'm assuming in scope and scale, we're trying to draw down the prominence, preeminence of things like signage and lighting and.
Yes, it's residentially zoning, essentially, so we have a range.
Right, so we're looking at character of, of the neighborhood. We're, we're trying to keep things at a scale where we're not, we're, we're not overly bright, and internally illuminated shines out, whereas externally illuminated shines at, in general. Is that correct?
That would be correct. And then we do have one household residences that abut the complex directly, so we.
Gotcha.
That's where a lot of our concern plays in, is that you are right against that.
Yep.
Neighborhood zoning that is also, as well as the apartment complex being a neighborhood zoning, that is predominantly characteristic of one and two household residences.
And since there's already a foundation there, that was the foundation from the old sign, or did they already get started on this?
The appellant's going to need to clarify, but it does appear to match what we saw in the detailed drawings of the proposed sign.
Because usually, you get all this figured out first, if you need variances or exceptions, and then you get your sign permit. But it looks like we have a sign kind of under construction, but we will cover that. If you're not aware, that's okay, we'll ask the applicant.
I don't know, Eric?
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly, okay. All right. What did your radius map show, or?
Oh, apologies. We didn't send out.
No, no, I might have preempted you.
We did send out cards, and we did not receive any back at this time, so.
All right. Okay. Anything else? Any questions? Okay, good enough? Thank you. Okay, so, this is kind of what we call the normal flow of how the hearing works. The applicant, the person who'd like to place the sign, or their, the property owner, or their sign company, whoever that may be, representing the owner, they've got up to 10 minutes to present their reasoning for this request, for the exception, for the internally illuminated sign. Is somebody here representing the property or the appellant? If not, this item will move pretty quick. Okay, going once, going twice. Staff, were, were you aware that anybody had an interest in coming down for item three today? From sign company, or the owner, or contractor?
It's my understanding that the sign contractor.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Well, since no one is present, we'll move forward further, then. Is there anybody here in the audience that wishes to speak in support of the applicant's request for the exception? If so, please come forward. Seeing none? Is there anybody here that wishes to speak in opposition to the exception request for the illuminated, internally illuminated sign? Or even in neutrality, for whatever reason that would be? Seeing none? Okay, do we have any further questions for staff on this one? Unless somebody did. Nope? Okay. All right, I think we're good. Well, go ahead, then, and close public portion, go to board deliberation. What do you guys think?
I want to make a motion. Is that okay?
Yeah, if you've got some reasoning behind it, go ahead and shoot.
Well, because it, it is against all of our rules, I would like to move that we deny this request.
Okay, all right. Is that clear enough for the record, Gary?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. All right, motion by Marlist for staff recommendation for denial of the requested exception. Anybody want to second that? Second by Rhonda. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, all right. So, motion carries six to zero for denial of the sign exception request. All right, that takes care of that one. Item four had been covered already on the motion, or moving to consent. I'll bring us to item five, a zoning exception request at 10163rd Street. Catherine will help us with that one.
Chair, members of the board, Catherine Drehouse. This item, you, some of you might recall, did come before for conditional use last year. The construction is wrapping up, and now they are looking to get some signs in place. There's quite a long list, I'm going to try and maybe summarize, but if there's specific questions about signs, we can come back and look at the finer details. They are looking to install 10 wall signs on their building, of which eight would be over the two maximum allowed on the west facade, which is the street-facing facade. And then, the overall amount of signage that they are looking to install would be 408.82 square feet over their maximum earnage of 130 square feet on the west frontage wall, street-facing wall. And in addition, 368.42 square feet would be, is what they're looking for to install over the maximum 65 square feet of signage that they are allowed to install on the south non-street-facing wall. And this is earned because of an allowance within the city code, which allows 50% of the sign area earned on the west wall of the building to be instead installed on the non-street-facing wall, in this case, the south wall. So this property, again, may look a little bit familiar. It's located essentially at the intersection of Vine Street in West Des Moines with 60, Southwest 63rd Street in Des Moines. Current state of construction on the project, this is for self-service storage. Renderings which show signs and placement, so they are allowed to put signs on this west facade. They have up to 130 square feet, and then they have, they can use 65, up to 65 square feet on this long, south-facing wall. And I'm going to zoom in on this elevation, just so you can see it a little bit more clearly. And then, if you have any questions. So they have signs located up here, over the essentially main entrance, over the various overhead doors for different operations, and in this case, a drive-in load and unload of storage, as well as signage here. I don't have a really good description for that, apologies.
So, so you're counting directional signs?
We are not counting directional signs.
Or informational signs, like, here's where you back up to unload?
So.
Versus, here's the, what the building, it's a U-Haul center?
I will, yeah, I'll try to explain it, yeah. In that case, yes, so we aren't counting directional signage, but they don't actually have, when you, I can zoom in a little bit closer, some of that signage isn't technically directional. What we are not counting is the clearance signage, so, but then they have this drive-in storage labeling above it. If it were directional signage, as determined by our zoning enforcement officer, it would be allowed, but in this case, it has not been determined to be directional signage.
And I'm, from my description, it's directional, or it's informative, it's not, it's for me to know where to go when I pull up there, but, okay. I was just curious if that's what you're accounting.
So, yeah, this drive-in storage, load and unload, drive-in storage, drive-in storage, drive-in storage. I forget exactly what that little guy says. Storage, load and unload, those are signs that we are looking at. And, yes.
To the best of your knowledge, did the appellant come in to even sit down and talk about this with staff first, or did they just go, yep, this is what we want to do, and we want an exception? Or a variance?
I'm going to check with the zoning enforcement officer.
You want to answer that?
I can answer right now, or do you want me to wait till?
Um, it depends on what kind of spotlight you want, but I suppose we can wait? I don't know.
You can just say more.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I can go through the rest of the presentation.
I mean, it's nice if Catherine's briefed enough to answer most of it, but, but, yeah, we'll, we'll have Eric come up here in a little bit.
And then, customer entrance is also a sign that we are counting.
Okay.
Try and get this to the right size. This just gave us some of the dimensional information. So, we've seen the elevations, I'll try and make this brief. Staff cannot support the request as presented, but we are recommending approval of an exception level for the request. And generally, that is our standard conditions, but then 50% over the allowed number of signs, and 50% over the allowed number of square footage, which equates to, three wall signs would be allowed at the exception level, and 195 square feet would be allowed as the amount of dimensional space on the wall signs. I'd be happy to answer additional questions, and then, we did not receive many cards back from our notification mailing, so, or.
Man, that's a couple of them now. Okay. All right, any other questions for Catherine? Okay? All right, thank you very much. All right, let's. All right, let's hear from the applicant on this. They've got up to 10 minutes to present their reasoning for their appeal. Good afternoon, sir. We just need your name and address to get started.
Good afternoon, Randy Dixon, 6310 Douglas, Des Moines, Iowa. There may be a little confusion about what the total amount of signage that was requested. Our take on this would be that the, on the list of signs in the staff report, that the bottom four lines would all be considered as directional, including the ones that have the sign, or the height limitations on them, because we want to try to eliminate any property damage. So the bottom four lines are all, are all of the ones that are above the doorways, including the one that says drive-in, load, unload? I would ask that those be considered as directional. This is going to be a tight site, and we need people to be able to move safely and efficiently throughout the site, and we believe the signs are very necessary to get that done. The top three signs totaled 342 square feet. And so that we ask that we can get as close to that, because this building is very large, as you can see, and we're afraid that 130 square feet of signage is going to get lost on this big building. And it sits close enough to the street that we need to have people be able to see our signage. That's about all I have. I'm here for questions, if you have any.
Well, Randy, I might just lead off with a clarification. We got your name, we got your address, but are you a sign contractor? Are you a building manager?
No, I'm with the U-Haul company, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, yeah, I didn't know who you were with.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, questions for Randy?
Hey, Randy, I'm familiar with your site. I don't live too far from there. Are you, are you dealing with like one-way? I'm not going to call it a road, but can traffic go both directions on all sides of that building? Because it is pretty compact.
On, on the site itself?
Yeah, on the, on the site.
Yeah, it's pretty much one way in, one way out. You can't, you can't go around the building.
Okay. Because when they come in on the one side, where you've got the doors with the instruction, I'm going to call them directional signs, informative, it's not an advertisement. It's basically, if you want to unload, bring it here.
Right.
Okay. Because I, yeah, I'm familiar with it, I drive by it all the time. It's, it is tight on that site, but I see what you're trying to do. Okay, thanks.
And also, I'm sorry, the only illuminated signs are going to be the top two on that list. The other ones are not illuminated, as indicated on the list here. If that makes any difference?
How far off the road, how far from 63rd Street are those signs, above those dock doors?
I'm sorry, how far does the building sit back?
What's the, what's the depth or length of your building? Just out of curiosity, where are those three dock doors that we can see right now? Yeah. Is that-
It's probably-
50 yards from the street?
Yeah, it's probably almost 200 feet back. Yeah.
Because here, again, I'm thinking visually, is this going to interrupt anything, too? If it's-
Yeah, it'd be hard to see them from the street, because they're so small, but once you're on the site, they're, they're going to be crucial.
Yeah. So Randy, a couple of questions for you. And, you know, I'm not the smartest guy in the room, but there's one driveway to get into this. I've had a CDL for 35 years. I can drive a straight truck, semi-truck, a school bus, a charter bus. I'm going to have to pull into your lot. I'm probably not going to have to be reading much on signage, except here's U-Haul, here's my entrance. When I'm on the site, then I will want to know what the dock doors mean, but I don't know that I need to see from the street in very large letters, oh, I unload back here. I'm going to pull in, and I'm going to start looking for some reasonable signage. You're allowed, you know, X amount of square feet. So, understanding our regulations from square one, what's the reason you couldn't try to craft this to work within the regulations?
Well, I guess I have to throw our design department under the bus on this.
Relating to buses, yeah.
I always, I always present the sign ordinance to them when we request-
Yes, yeah.
That they image a building for us.
Exactly.
They always try to push the envelope.
Yeah.
And then that leaves me standing here, looking like a fool, but-
No, no, you're not looking like a fool, but again, appreciate your candor, because I'm like, gee, how come 90% of this isn't figured out before we have to get here?
Yeah.
Like, this is just what I want, just because this is kind of what I'd like, like my Christmas list, I'm not going to get everything I want.
Yeah.
But like, your storage place, I don't know what that means. Is, is that just a nice catchphrase, or is that tiny door specific to your storage place? What is that?
No, it's, it's just a branding for storage.
Once I'm on the site, and I'm 150 feet in, I know I'm at my storage place.
Yes, yeah, and I'm not asking for that to be considered as directional.
Okay. But if it just wasn't there, you would have, I think, a little more square footage to play with for your other signage, is what I'm getting at, you know?
I agree in that, yeah.
What's necessary, yeah, what's not? Let's take the, let's, let's, let's take the, I don't know what you want to call it, but the detrus off the table here. Your storage place. Yeah, okay, I get it. But I know I'm at the storage place, because it said U-Haul, and I've already pulled into it.
Sure.
Yeah.
We could possibly reduce the image size, of course.
Okay.
Depending on what our allowance ends up being.
All right. Yeah. What, what I'm always challenged with here is not armchair quarterbacking how to design your signage, but to just look at, within the regulations, the number of signs or the total square footage, is that reasonable for an exception? What I don't like to do is cherry pick which sign I like, which one I don't, make this one 10 square feet smaller. We, we'll be here till 6 o'clock at night if we do that. And, you know, I'll take the time necessary when we need to make decisions, but I like to kind of simplify it. If the exception makes sense, great, but I kind of want you to go back and figure it out then. So, so it's not really a question, but just more of a statement.
Okay.
Yeah.
So-
Any other questions? Dave?
Are you asking if he has the authority to say, yeah, if your storage place is removed, and here's how many square feet you are, can you live with that? Are you trying to, are you kind of asking that?
Well, I'm not trying to over-negotiate or start doing math in reverse, but if we say, hey, listen, if we would go with staff recommendation, you know, there's some exception levels, three-wall sign, cumulative square footage.
Right.
They figure out how to make their signage fit, and if it's truly directional signage, or they craft it better, so it's just directional, then staff administratively would say, no, that's not in, not in this.
Well, yeah, and I think, also talking about here is that-
Yeah, I mean-
How do you, how do you define directional? Because I think drive-in storage, load, unload is directional. That is, that, it's a utility for me to know where to go.
I might agree with that.
So that, and that was my point when I asked that. So-
Right.
And I'm with you. I-
Yeah.
I don't, I don't want to be here till 6.
But climate control, that's advertising to me, you know? 24-hour security, lighted hallways, climate control, eh, yeah, yeah, now that's advertising. That's great to have, that's what you want with indoor storage. So, all right, to keep moving for Randy's benefit, any other questions for him? Anything you want to say in closing?
Yeah, just, just to clarify that the, the signage on the top of the building, on the, on the south and the west fronts of the building, or we have the U-Haul sign, and it says climate controlled, and then it also says drive-in storage. Those, those would be counted as two signs. And then the your storage place would be counted as the third sign, under staff recommendations, if I'm, if I'm correct. And then I'm asking for help to have the rest of them taken off of here and used as directional.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, you're, you're as clear as you can be.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Thanks, Randy. Okay, anybody here to speak in support of the applicant? Seeing none, anybody here to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Anybody to speak in neutrality? Seeing none? Okay, further questions for staff? And I think zoning enforcement officer may help us with a couple of questions. So Eric, just to kind of transition here, yeah, did you guys sit down and have a heart-to-heart with the applicant before they-
We didn't have a heart-to-heart.
Okay.
Their sign director has been dealing with our reviewer.
Okay, okay. So they kind of just submitted what they wanted, and-
So, as much as you intuitively feel like they're directional, there's nothing in our ordinance for directional signs.
That's important to-
There is signs pertinent to driveways, which are freestanding signs, not signs mounted on buildings.
Like the In-N-Out, if there's two driveways?
Yeah, and those have monuments if they're visible from the street.
Okay, all right.
So, so our new ordinance came out of the wake of Gilbert versus Arizona Supreme Court case that basically said we can't dictate content. So that takes away all these things in our ordinance that-
I see.
Sort of speak to content like directional. There was some leeway for governmental speech in, in interest of public safety, so your clearance bars, you know, we're not messing with that, we're not messing with the little sheet on the outside that speaks to prohibition of certain hazardous materials, or something like that. But everything, you know, everything else, we don't look at the content, it's a sign. Now that said, I think we'd understood when the ordinance was put together, that the relief valve would be the board, and that the board has some ability to consider practicality and things like that. So that was, that was the mechanism that, because we couldn't craft language to get around-
I got you.
The things that, you know, to, to get around the Gilbert-
Yeah.
Decision, so. Instead, we made it easier to grant sign relief through the criteria that's looked at, so. The board, while the board can't declare them directional signs, because it's really not a type of sign in our code, they can speak to, I think they can speak to the practicality if they believe that's, you know, something that's important.
I got you.
And they can speak to the character, or whether it impacts the character, I think, is, as well. Those are all in your criteria for your reviews. Do you have any questions?
I got a question, Eric. So does this mean we're going to have more sign ordinances come before us?
Well, you've probably experienced that.
Yeah, I have fatigues, I have sign fatigue.
Yes.
Just venting a little bit here.
Basically, by the way the ordinances were created, you're going to have more signage, more conditional use activity, and less, you know, what you used to get in terms of building setbacks, things like that, that it's now in the other.
So our court system's taking away your gray crayon, you have black and you have-
A little bit, to some extent, yeah, at least the interpretation.
Good comparison.
Yeah. That doesn't mean we're not, you know, thinking of ways to make things a little more streamlined. We're not trying to put barriers. Again, the challenge is, how do we decide drive-in storage, load, unload at that size is, you know, purely directional versus, you know? I mean, honestly, in this case, from a content standpoint, you see the same thing four times over those three doors, basically. So is it, we can't really get into the necessity of what the message is. And that's what, you know? And we, we have the same challenge everywhere else, you know? A lot of businesses want to slap up stuff in their windows, and so we have a limitation on how much can go into windows and things like that, without dictating the content.
Right.
So that's, that's where we're standing, so when you sort of feel intuitive, I guess you can sort of think about how do the criteria apply to the situation?
Eric, the cumulative 195 square feet of signage area, that remains in the exception level for the overall signage total, right?
Yes, that sounds right, yeah.
Okay, yeah. You know, I'd be inclined to say it's reasonable of, above a garage door to have a sign, like the little, what I would call the little green horizontal ones, but those would count as a one, two, three, four for signs, right? But if we wanted to say something like, well, okay, yeah, I'd like to allow the signage on the front, on the west facade, the large one on the south facade, the customer entrance, that's three, and then four, five, six, seven total signs, that would cover the doors. If I pull up, I do want to know. But by the time I'm on site, I don't need 18-inch-high letters that say drive-in, storage, load, unload. We're not doing this on content. But I think it's reasonable to have something above the door that says what it is. But those would add up then to seven signs, but still keep 195 square feet, in my opinion. I'd, I'd be reasonable to that. Would that still count as an exception? Because the number of signs would still be a lot.
It all counts as a type-two exception.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we're all an exception, there's no variant.
It's the entire spectrum of anything that you want, what they've asked for, or anything less can be considered a type-two exception.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Anything else for Eric? Okay. All right, so with that, we'll close public portion, go to board deliberation. What do you guys think?
So, there's some redundancy there. If we look above those three dock doors, just start there.
Yeah.
The little green signs say the same thing as the larger black letter above it.
Exactly, exactly.
So, I don't know if we're counting square footage here, or number of signs, but, and here again, I don't want to get into the design of it, but-
Right.
I get what they're trying to do, and-
Right.
There's nothing more frustrating than when you drive into a place, and you're trying to find where to go.
Right, right.
You know, and I just went through this at a, one of those big lumberyards recently, and it's a hassle, when they go, yeah, just go around the corner and go back there, four doors, and it's like, there's trucks everywhere, and there's nine doors on this side of the building, and I'm just trying to pick up some doorknobs.
But this is one driveway in, you see customer entrance, you see the first overhead, and then you see the, the, the other three doors. And if they're all the same, maybe they could have one sign that covers all three.
So, yeah, I think-
You know, I think it's a matter of them being creative to work within the square footage. The number of signs isn't as big of a deal to me as the square footage would be to go with it. And then they could decide which signs are, are superfluous, if that's the right pronunciation. I think your storage place, again, we're not here to regulate content, but I, you know, if I was to throw somebody off my lifeboat, that'd be the first one.
Yeah.
Chair, so are you saying that you're, you're kind of leaning towards what the staff recommendation is in terms of the square footage?
Yes.
And then just leaving it up to them, whether, how many signs they have?
Well, but I'd say shall not exceed a total of, I'd say, seven wall signs, because I see what they're trying to do on the west facade-
Have max on the side.
And by the entrance, and maybe one above each door, but they could divide it out how they want, but I'd say you keep the cumulative 195 square feet, which still has exceptions. We're granting more than allowed, but up to seven signs, and they cut and hack on their own and figure out what signs are going to go where. I'm going to, we can have further discussion, but while that's on the table, I'm just going to make that a motion.
My concern is that their sign people had a copy of our ordinance for their design.
Well, I, I think, I really appreciate how Randy put, put it, that he said, well, you know, he tries to design, or he'd want to probably follow the ordinance, but the largers with the franchise, or however it works, and their signage people, they just design what they want. And I'm probably oversimplifying what he said, but-
I understand that, but we have sign ordinances for a reason.
Exactly. And I think it's important for people to talk to their uppers and say, hey, I mean, we've seen this with national food chains, you know? Well, this is our branding. Well, this is our city. So, you know, when Walmart wanted to show up in Pella, they made the building look how Pella wanted. I think we can have signage how our city wants, and within reason, that's why we're here.
Can't be grudging for asking.
No, no. No, it adds to our agenda, makes it interesting. But, but I, but I will say this, there's one driveway in on one side of the building. If you show up, you're pointing in a direction facing forward. There's my customer entrance, there's my first door, what is it? Here's my other three doors. It shouldn't be that difficult to navigate with a reasonable allowance for signage. So my proposal would be staff rec for approval of type-two- So my proposal would be staff rec for approval of type-two zoning exceptions subject to the following three conditions, including the 195 square feet, but a mending item want to allow for a total of seven wall signs, but within that. That's what I'm going to throw out. Anybody want a second?
I'll second.
All right, second by date. If there's any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
All right, nothing wrong with that. Okay, that motion carries five to one. So Randy, I think we gave you as much as I think we could here, but yeah, it'll be a nice addition there on the corridor. I'll be glad to see your building finished and apparently there's a big demand for people to store stuff.
Hey Randy, tell you-
You're in the right business.
Tell your design guys that they sent a guy to a gunfight with a knife.
Well...
Understood.
All right, we'll get you a copy of that next week for the approval. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you all.
All right, we are going to take a five-minute break. I appreciate everybody's patience back here. We'll get to your items just quickly here, but we're going to take a five-minute break. So we'll be back at 3:15. HPC is what? We outrank them because we're quasi-judicial. They can meet in the hall. No, we'll keep it moving here. All right, okay. Item six is a conditional use permit request, 2917 Payne Road. And I think on this one, Shreyoshi, you're going to help us out?
All right. Thank you, Chair. Members of the board, Shreyoshi, Chakrabarti, planning staff. I'm here to give a brief presentation on the conditional use approval request from the appellant at the property at 2917 Payne Road. The specific appeal is a conditional use approval request for a limited retail sale, you selling wine and/or beer for off-premise consumption in an RX-1 district. So here's the property in question. It's at the intersection of Payne Road and 30th Street. It's in a about 12,500-square-foot property. The building itself is over 2,000 square foot. As you can see, this is predominantly in a low-density residential area. This intersection right here has a few things going on. There's the store right here in the subject property. There's office use across the street on 30th Street. There is multifamily housing to the north and to the northwest. As you can see right here, it's zoned NX-1. But the rest of the general vicinity is zoned N district and includes low-density residential. This is a concept that the applicant submitted and you can see here the general layout of the property. So there is parking to the south, which is the front, fronting Payne Road. And then there's also parking to the west side, which fronts 30th Street. This is the general interior layout. As you can see here, the beer and wine is proposed to be stored here in the cooler at the back. And according to the information that the appellant provided, it's going to be in a cooler that's about 257 square foot in area and of that about 100.8 square foot area is going to be dedicated for the beer and wine, which is roughly about 39% of the cooler space right here. Here's some pictures just to give you an idea of the general neighborhood. This is looking east towards the subject property and this is, again, looking east further closer to the subject property. As you can see, there's multifamily residential to the north and northwest. As you zoom in a little bit, you can see, get an idea how close the multifamily building is to the lot line and the store within the subject property. This is looking south and here's Payne Road right here. There is a low-density residential, there's a duplex directly across the street. And this is looking further east on Payne Road. And as you can see, if you look beyond the multifamily, it's pretty much single-family residential as you look further to the east. And here's another picture showing generally the property. Here's parking. That is pretty much, you can say, the buffer between low-density residential. This is the parking space for the multifamily housing that's directly north to the subject property. There is a little bit of zoning history to this and this was included in the staff report and I'll just briefly summarize this for you. So in November of 2014, the Board of Adjustment had granted the previous property owner for the subject property a conditional use for limited food retail sales establishment selling wine and beer in a C1 district. And as you can see here, there were several conditions that were part of the approval. I think there's about 17, 19 conditions. However, subsequently, the previous owner was not able to be in compliance with all of the conditions and as a result relinquished the conditional use. And so since then, the business on the premise has been operating as a retail store, essentially without the alcohol sales. So just wanted to point that out. Reviewing the criteria for this particular request, staff has looked at the various criteria as well and the primary staff rationale for this recommendation is the location of this particular site. As I showed to you in the map that showed the zoning, the land use, as well as the character of the neighborhood, staff thinks that the proposed location and operation could have a negative impact and may not adequately safeguard the health, safety, and general welfare of the residents that live in the surrounding area, specifically the multiple household users that are directly north and northwest, as well as the single-family residential that are immediately beyond that. And in addition, there is also not sufficient separation in terms of distance, landscaping, and/or any other structures. And so staff is recommending denial of this conditional use request. With that, I wanted to show some of the comment cards we received. We received quite a few and I will just go through these slowly so you can take a look at them, can zoom in a little bit. There's quite a few here, so... Please let me know if you need me to...
The one, "my staff doesn't feel safe after dark." Who sent that in? What business is that related to? The top card? Owner of, directly across street, what kind of business is that? Any idea? Advertising company, okay. All right, thank you. You can go ahead and keep scrolling if you want. Did you just come in? Okay. Wow. Christmas, too many cards.
We also received a letter from a resident at 2908 Payne Road and I'll let you read her letter in opposition to this request.
Is Mary Ann Marshall, is she just a concerned citizen? She represent a neighborhood or anything? Do you know?
I think she's a, I think she's a concerned resident in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
And then finally, here's the consent map that'll give you a better idea about some of the comment cards that came in opposition from the adjacent property owners within 250 feet. So that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
All right, questions for Shreyoshi? Down here? Yeah, which way did those come?
This way, we started.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, all right, yeah, so we got comment cards covered. Any questions?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you very much for your presentation. All right, applicant or representative of the applicant? Okay, you got up to 10 minutes. We just need you to start with your name, address, and tell us why you'd like to have a conditional use to sell alcohol.
My name is Toshil Gosmer, Gotham Buddha LLC, 2325 East Los Angeles, Dwayne Iowa. I'm the half-owner of the property located at 2917 Payne Avenue and the other half is back there, I'm right, is my partner. And I own a smoke shop and gas station in the side of Des Moines. As per my experience, like if we have the beer and wine, people, you know, buy food, hot food, cigarettes and stuff like that. And they told me, like, a lot of customers walk in asking for beer and wine and they don't have the permit. If we get permit, like, you know, their business, the revenue will go up. They're asking to lower the rent because, you know, they're not making any money. But if we get the beer and permit, wine permit, it'll help us a lot. That's all I have to say.
Okay, all right, pretty straightforward. Do we have questions for the applicant? I've just got a couple of brief ones for you. You say, so you're the half-owner. So how long have you been involved in the ownership here? Like generally, a couple of years?
Yeah, we bought that property back in March.
Okay, in March of this year, so nine, 10 months ago. So you understood at the time that you were not allowed or there were no permissions to sell alcohol at the time, right?
Yes, we were, we were with that.
And when you bought into the business, did you see the numbers, the sales numbers from the past owner? Did they say, hey, here's about how much revenue? Did they share that with you?
Yes, they did. And then since the owner was not present at the location, you know, so basically the employee was running the business.
Okay.
So there was potential, like if somebody takes over the new owner, you know, like we'll be working hard if we take over the new business.
Right.
And then the owners are present in the location 24/7, I mean, open to close. So we open at eight and close at midnight, so owners are present all the time. It's not the employee running the business.
Right.
So anything happens, we'll take, you know, actions. As for employees, they don't really care, you know, these days. So we have made a lot of changes. We have put more stuff, more merchandise in it. So it's growing little by little, so my...
Yeah, Justin.
Thank you. There was a card of someone that mentioned about gambling machines. Are there machines in that grocery store?
Those are actually the arcade games. It's not gambling machine, it's a...
It's just a game, right?
It's just a game, like...
Oh, right, yeah.
It's like video game kind of thing, you know?
Okay.
I don't know how to explain that.
Sure. Yeah, you can't win money at the machine, but maybe you get some little tickets and you can turn those in towards...
It's just like in bars, like they have that game, but but this one is a little different, it's a video game. It's a video game, and if they win money, they can buy merchandise, like.
Right.
Beer and wine. People win up to like $100, you know? And then they can't spend all that money at once, and then they want a beer.
They could buy a lot of milk and bread.
Yeah. At the end of the day, it comes to beer and wine.
Okay.
Like, if they win big money.
So while we don't like to get into finances, that's not most of our expertise or our jurisdiction, in essence, when you bought the business, you kind of knew what they were doing for revenue. And what you've said is, you've increased how you run the store to be better, you're carrying more merchandise. So in essence, you can make more money with your current sales plan than probably what was there when you bought it, right?
Yes.
Okay. And I certainly understand that, yeah, if we offer more things to more people, including alcohol, sure, I have no doubt you'd get more sales. But I also saw there was a letter where there was a lot, in that same letter Justin noted, they said that even without alcohol sales, the parking lot's crowded with loitering. They said there's drug sales. We don't, I don't see any police reports here, but there's a lot of litter. It's noisy. I would think if people are coming in to buy your nice groceries, why are we having that kind of issue now? Do you have, I mean, is that accurate, or do you think they're, Ms. Marshall's not accurate in her statement?
Well, so since we took over the store back in March.
Yeah.
I don't think there are any violences, like, there used to be, you know?
Okay.
So it's.
So maybe these are her observations over a couple of years, and not just the last since March, potentially. Okay. Okay. All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Did you sit down with city staff very closely? Did you ask before you bought into the business what the requirements and the constrictions were? Were you aware point-blank that you couldn't sell alcohol when you bought in, and you knew that?
Okay. I was trying to buy this, buy the business.
Yeah.
Same property back in 2017.
Yeah.
And I knew.
Okay.
Previous, you know?
Okay. All right.
So I was aware of that.
Yeah. I got you. All right. All right. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. You can go ahead and sit down. All right. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in support of the applicant? They would have up to five minutes to speak in support of the applicant's request for the conditional use to sell alcohol. Seeing none, anybody here to speak in opposition? All right. Come on up.
Hi. Sorry. My name is Ricky King. I actually am at 950 65th Street in Windsor Heights. I'm here on behalf of Tom Cameron, who lives in the neighborhood at 3501 28th Street. He had to leave to go to another meeting, but he did leave me notes to read, and I'll leave them for an exhibit for you guys. He's the Prospect Park Neighborhood Association Vice President. He said, the Prospect Park Store, previously sold alcohol was majority. I'm just going to read it because it'll be easier.
Sure, sure.
The issues included late-night heavy traffic, violence, trash, speeding. There's been gunfire, and I just heard that he said they just bought the store a year ago, or this year. So this could be the past person that made this promise. It said, broken promise to sell mostly food and groceries, not alcohol. And the Neighborhood Association is trying to hard, is trying hard to encourage growth of family-friendly businesses in the neighborhood. Already have, they already have a number of bars in the Prospect Park neighborhood. This business is in the middle of the, middle of an otherwise quiet neighborhood, which is previously set on the corner of 30th and Payne, which is actually a busy street. He did contact Officer, the White Police Department Officer Schwartz, to get a crime report, but due to their reporting system being down.
Yes.
He was unable to get the percentages, of the crime percentages. Currently appears, oh, the clientele currently appears to mostly appeal to a gaming audience that takes up a lot, at least a fourth of the store's space. And as he previously said, the gaming is the video games, which on observation, those tickets can't actually be sold to other customers for cash, so it is still gaming, even though it's not technically considered gaming by the state for illegal gaming. This is moving the neighborhood backwards instead of forward for a safe environment for our neighborhood, and they're looking for a similar type of safe neighborhood as the buildings downtown on Court that was discussed earlier in the process. I might be able to answer a question. He's talked to this about me, to me before, if there are any questions.
I'm just kind of curious. On your behalf for being here, you're either a good friend or something to hang out here, but do you live in the area as well?
No, I do not. I'm in Windsor Heights.
All right.
I just came as moral support, and he had to leave.
Okay.
And he wanted something written, since there was two other people that were here, they had to leave also.
Got it. Okay. All right. Well, again, he owes you dinner or something. Any questions? Okay. Thank you for coming in today. Appreciate it.
Who should I leave this with?
Yeah. Frank. Frank will take that from you. Yeah. Okay. Anybody else here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, do we have any further questions for staff? I would have a very brief one. Can they sell tobacco on their own without any special permissions from us if they're not selling alcohol? Is that okay? There's no limitation on cigarette sales unless alcohol's involved? Is that correct? It sounds like yes. Need microphone there. Yeah.
Yeah. That's correct.
Okay. Okay. All right. Okay. Very helpful. Okay. Applicant, since there was somebody that spoke in opposition, kind of as a counterpoint or to close this out, you can have up to three minutes for rebuttal or closing comments. Do you guys want to add anything to your story before we make our decision?
Like I said earlier, the owners are present all the time. It's open and closed, so there shouldn't be, we'll control as much as we can. It's not, anything is not promising, you know? But the previous owner, the employee was running the business. But now the owner are actually present all the time, and we're going to be running the business.
Yeah.
So whatever happened previous owner, that's not going to happen. I'm not going to promise, but we'll control as much as we can, you know?
Yeah. No, that's a fair statement. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. We'll close the public portion, go to board deliberation. Thoughts from the board members? Justin?
Chair. I put a lot of stock in what the neighborhood neighbors say. And so it seems like, at least from what we heard, looking at the cards, it seems like there was two other people here that didn't, couldn't stay, along with her friend. So, I mean, it seems like there's quite a bit of opposition here from the neighborhood. I think that's worth noting for all of us while we make our decision today. Thank you.
I firmly believe, you know, testimony is about what we see and hear, but staff did mention that, you know, this previously had been in front of this board. There had been some concerns. There were some necessary conditions. This was another one. You got to come into the principal's office for a real heart-to-heart. And apparently, the owner decided that wasn't a workable model anyway, and away they went. But for some of us who remember being here at the time on the board, alcohol did not go well here. There's an apartment building directly to the north, 40 feet. There were people, like, getting into the vestibule and passing out. It was bad news. Now, by the same token, these guys have said, hey, you know, that's not us. You know, we're much nicer guys, you know? We not only own it, we work there. But even if I wanted to take that into account, when we look at the geographic setting here of this business, it's right in the middle of a 99% residential neighborhood. You've got a multifamily apartment directly to the north, 40 feet away from the back wall. You've got single-family residences to the lot south, to the east. Like Justin said, we listen to the neighbors. They sent in a bunch of comment cards. Just based on setting alone, to me, it would not be conducive to allow alcohol sales at this kind of establishment. There's nothing I would like better than to be able to have a place in walking distance for bananas and bread and milk, especially on a day like this, where I don't have to fight people at a big store. They can sell cigarettes. They can sell tobacco. But they bought the business understanding this was not allowed. They can increase the revenue by offering more products, but I would not feel comfortable with allowing the alcohol use just based on the neighborhood setting. And staff clearly noted that with the proximity and their staff rec. So those are my thoughts. Anybody else? Or a motion? I don't want to be the mean guy today, but we have further discussion, but I'll make a motion for denial of the conditional use request on item six, 2917 Payne, second by Marlis. All right. So we got a motion, a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. All right. Motion carries six-zero. Staff, I'd encourage you to work with the property owners so that they can do well with their business model within our regulations. And I hope you guys keep running a good business. I hope these past issues were in the past, but be a good part of the neighborhood here like I think you will be, and I think you'll be successful. All right. That concludes item six. We'll move on then to item seven. Item seven is a use variance request at 3123 Indianola Avenue.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the commission. Item seven is located at 3123 Indianola Avenue. Use of the property is for junk and salvage yard business for outdoor equipment, storage, recycling, junk and/or salvage operation. This requires a use variance of uses permitted in an N3A district. As you can see, the property is noted here in the yellow. To the north would be residential uses, and to the west would be some residential uses as well, with a mix of commercial. To the south, there is, I believe, a car wash up northwestern of the site, just to give some context. And then to the east, there is commercial uses. And so the property is approximately half acre, and it includes a single house, household dwelling unit. It is currently being used for a variety of uses, which have been found to be in violation of the city municipal code, which is why we are here today. Some of those uses include outdoor storage, vehicular components, maybe some miscellaneous materials, pallets, et cetera. So here's a view of the property, just in front of it. Here's a view of the property facing north. Here is one of the items that is stored on the property that I'll talk about in a moment, a Bobcat, an excavator, and a couple truck and trailers. And these, the equipment photos were supplied by the applicant as well. And so here is a layout of what the applicant is proposing to do with the property. And so they do, in this photo, you can see the Indianolas up here in the front. They're proposing to store the truck and trailers on the driveways, used for, I believe, work, work-related and personal use. And then the personal-use equipment, which are the Bobcat and the excavator, would be stored back behind the building. The pole barn building, there are a couple sheds as well behind the house. And so the debris, the materials would be cleaned up. Another photo of the layout that's further back in the yard. And so the applicable requirements, the use as proposed, would typically be required in an I-2 district. And so what I'd like to do is talk just a little bit about the zoning history associated with the property. And so in 2018, the, an exception was granted to allow an accessory structure that was larger than what the code generally allowed at that time. In March of this year, the, a notice of violation was issued to the property where there's noted multiple prohibited uses on the property, including equipment, material storage, outdoor and junk or salvage yard, which wouldn't be principal or accessory within an N3A district. As of any use variance, a hardship must be determined to grant a use variance indicating that the property cannot yield a reasonable return for any uses permitted in the zoning district, the plight of the owners due to unique circumstances not of the owner's own making, and the use or construction authorized by the zoning variance would not alter the essential character of the area. I would like to mention the additional criteria associated with this project. The appellate has proposed to store and use commercial equipment, including a skid loader, excavator, in addition to the two residential trucks and trailers. According to the appellate, these are used for general home maintenance and mental health exercises. The appellate is proposing to have outdoor storage for up to one year in order to relocate items on the property, such as pallets, hobby-related materials, and items passed on by family member estate and building and landscaping materials. And so that was one of the key considerations for the appellate, is to really have time to take care of some of those estate materials. And so staff has determined that granting the use, the requested zoning variance would not be consistent with the intended spirit or purpose of the zoning ordinance, in harmony with the essential character of the surrounding neighborhood. The appellate has not satisfied the criteria required for granting a variance as contained in City Code Section 134, 6 dot 7 dot 7 dot A. The appellate has not demonstrated that they face an unnecessary hardship as the land in question can yield a reasonable return from the uses permitted on the property. As, you know, as noted by the criteria, it's not sufficient merely to show that the value of the land has been depreciated by the regulations, or that a variance would permit the owner to maintain a more profitable use. Staff is recommending denial. I would like to show the consent map. We did receive a comment card that did come in later today, which I'll read off, but as you can see, we do show one opposition, one in support of. But we do have a few comment cards here that show that they're in support of the appellate. And here is a summary of the applicant's neighborhood meeting. Notifications were sent out, but no one, no one attended the meeting. Now, the applicant did provide a number of responses. Now, the applicant did provide a number of responses from neighbors that were in support. If I need to slow down or back up, please let me know.
I think I get the idea here.
So that was, that was the first letter.
I think someone needs to talk to Jonathan Gaino down at Public Works, but that's not City street stuff. Yeah. So with these letters here in support, do you show those on the map as well then to understand where these people actually live? It appears there's more letters than there are adjoining properties.
Not all, not all of them are within that circle as I understand it.
Okay.
Three of the four are.
Okay. We'll let you address that when it's your turn up here. I just wondered if staff, how you log these support letters in?
Yeah.
You just put them in the record then?
Yep, we put them in the record. We must not have gotten the comment card with them. Then I did receive an additional comment card right as I was walking out the door today. It was from Indianola Hills Neighborhood Association. We'd like to see this kept as residential mixed use as it is close to school, residence, and busy streets.
Can you lay that on the overhead so we can see it?
Definitely.
Sorry if that takes a lot of effort. Okay. All right, while that comes, there we go. Indianola Hills, okay, got it. So Frank, you ready for some questions?
Yes.
All right. I'm just going to lead off here, kind of familiar with the area. So Frank, in 2018, the zoning board of adjustment granted some authority for what looked like a residential property to build some accessory structures. I'm assuming at the time there would have been some conditions that those accessory structures couldn't be used for any commercial purposes. To the best of your knowledge, are you familiar with if there were some terms that went with that? I mean, this wasn't like a business expansion at the time, was it? Or, okay?
Not to my knowledge.
For some reason, I don't recall that one. I don't know if it was on consent or...
Yeah, retention.
Yeah, and I don't mean to make you dig too deep, but I was just curious. Yeah, yeah, we'll have Eric look that up. Related to where you're at here, you've got here on October 24th, the council denied the request to rezone the property to I-2 industrial district. Along the way, was planning and zoning involved before that as a commission for the request for rezoning?
Yes, yes.
And what did P&amp;Z state? Do you know if they approved or, did they recommend approval for rezoning?
They did not. They recommended deny.
Not to criticize, but I think it would be important to note if this had come before the P&amp;Z and what the commission had said. I know council has final authority, but I think, you know, plan and zoning commission are fellow citizens, and that is a board, or a commission process. But you've answered my question. It went before P&amp;Z for rezoning. The commission said no. He has the right to go to council. Council said no, correct?
Correct.
Okay, got you there. All right, and, I'll just tax you a little more here. Even if we wanted to grant this I-2 request, with the way the property is laid out, would he still not have to then meet a full slate of site plan requirements for screening and frontage setbacks? I see, you know, equipment that would be stored in a front yard setback. We've got two driveways, none are paved. Wouldn't this result in a whole host of things he'd have to do even if we wanted to grant this variance?
Yeah, that is correct, and so the, any salvage materials would be subject to these provisions that I have up on the screen. And so all driveways, parking lots, areas, temporary, et cetera.
All right. All right, I know I've thrown him a number of softball, or baseballs here, not softballs. Any other question?
Excuse me, Frank, you said earlier that the Bobcat and skid loader were, or whatever it was, were for personal use?
Yes, yes, for personal use and for some, some exercises, some health exercises, I believe. I would ask the applicant to speak.
Does it derive any income from using that equipment off-premise? I guess my question is, is he running a business on this property?
The applicant has told me that he is not running a business out of that location. He does have a business elsewhere.
What kind of business is that?
I, I would ask the applicant to speak to the full extent, but to my knowledge, it is, it might be similar to salvage.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm on Tom's wavelength here for question, and not specific to this gentleman, and we'll hear what he has to say, but let's say somebody does have a skid steer, you know, Bobcat is one trade name of that, and 99% of the time, they just used it on their own personal property. I'd love to have one, that would be great. But if even 1% of the time, they truck that off-site and, oh yeah, as a contractor, yeah, I need a skid steer, good thing I own one. If it's used for any kind of business purpose at any type, then by zoning, no, can't store it on that property because you've had a business use. Even if you have a personal use, a majority of the time, it's like in for a penny, in for a pound. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Anything else for staff? Or for the presenter, I should say, since Frank let us off. Okay, all right, thank you, Frank. Appreciate your introduction on this one. Okay, applicant, you've got up to 10 minutes to give your reasoning for your use variance. We just need you to start off with your name and address, and you've got the floor.
Before I get started, I noticed that we had started the day with another board member present, and that's one less vote that's possible to attain that. I don't know if that's something that I could ask the board to reschedule me for, or if that's something that we should not even worry about, and maybe I should take my chances with this board. I don't know.
I can address that all the way around. That's a good observation. I guess I missed Justin sneaking out on us here, but, yeah, so the way our process works, it always takes four affirmative votes.
Roger that.
So to have a quorum, we would need four people.
Right.
We can't always guarantee there will be seven, six, or even five of us present, but if we have five people or less, an applicant does have the right to ask this to be continued to the next regularly scheduled hearing, if they would like.
Right.
But if we get into the next meeting in January, and, oh, somebody had to leave early, somebody's sick, that's another case we had today, I can't guarantee you that we'll have six. I can't guarantee you that we'll have seven. But you do have the right to ask if you'd like this to be deferred a month.
I would like that opportunity if it's possible to be afforded to me.
Anything to add? That's cool, Gary. Okay. All right, yeah. Do we need to take a formal vote? I mean, we can.
Couldn't hurt.
Okay, all right. Okay, the applicant has requested that we continue the hearing to the next regularly scheduled meeting in order to hopefully have additional member or two present.
I also do have one more comment on this. I was reading through the procedures on this, and it had said that the city staff couldn't present, so...
I want to be careful that, yeah, we don't get too further down the pipe.
Not the others, that scares me with that, and I didn't want to bring it up rudely.
Right. In the procedures, which I think were provided to you when you made your application, it had that in there. If that was a concern up front, you could have mentioned it to staff. When we started the hearing, we did have six members present, but what I don't want to do...
Actually, before my...
Yeah, I just don't want to prejudice you or us to discuss the case further. I am happy to defer it to next month.
Well, my question, and this is a hard question, it's like, it's kind of front-loaded. If you guys have already heard their side, and then I walk away for the next month, and then to come right back, am I doing myself a disservice because you've heard one side of it, but you haven't heard my side, and maybe I should go today? But if there's a situation where potentially a sixth board member...
That's a decision for you to make. Just because there are more board members present doesn't necessarily mean that a majority swings one way or the other. I just can't get into that with you.
Okay.
So, you know, there's factual information that is already in the city record from the council, P&amp;Z. You've probably listened and heard, we have open eyes and ears. If you want to proceed, you can.
I suppose I'll proceed today and take my best...
But if you don't want to proceed, you can wait till next month.
I better wait, or I'm sorry, I better go ahead today and not wait.
Okay, okay. All right. Okay, so since you're at the podium, you've got up to 10 minutes, so tell us why we should grant your use variance.
Good afternoon, Chair member, sorry, board members and Chair. My name's Keegan Jarvis. I am the owner and resident of 3123 Indianola Avenue. This is my home. This is not a business. There's nothing there that is being used for business. Absolutely unequivocally, nothing there. There was a question that was just posed, I believe it was by yourself, Mr. Chair, that if the piece of equipment is taken off the site even one time utilized for business, then it's a business piece of, it's a business asset. I can guarantee you guys, every one of you on this board, that that is not what is happening. These things are allotted to my house, and that is where they sit. They don't go back and forth to my business. My business is located on 22nd Street in an I-2 area. It's zoned for what it does, operates as it does, and nothing goes from my house to my business, or my business to my house. Maybe that first one, there might be something goes from my house to my business, but not the other way back. I am not running a business out of my house. There is not a shred of evidence that the city has to support that because it's clearly not happening. I have great respect for all of, you know, the city staff, and I think they're great people. I've had, you know, great interactions with them, and I've really tried to meet what they're asking me to do, and I intend to completely conform to what they're asking. I was informed that you guys are kind of the relief valve, if you will, for allowing me to come into compliance and to giving me some relief from immediately the timeframe. It's not a, I don't want to continue this, I don't want to keep this property in the state, I want to get it completely cleaned up so that there's no effects in my backyard. As far as the truck and trailer, I just want to be able to drive my business truck home at night. It's not, I'm not using it for, if it's being used on the premises, it's being used for personal use to take things off the property or to go to Menards and pick something up. I'm asking to be able to store and utilize a skid loader and the associated attachments for moving snow. I have two driveway approaches, and sometimes those get plowed in, and the bottom layer of that is a foot of ice. When those snowplows push all that snow around, it creates heat, so that first layer is slush. That slush becomes ice, and now I have a speed bump that's almost impassable at the end of my driveway. Asking to be allowed to use, store and utilize a miniature excavator, that's how I get up underneath those icebergs at the end of my driveway, and I pull back and I'm able to pull them out. I also use the excavator for mindfulness activities. I have a little red ball, and I pick it up, and I'll set it on top of a pallet, or I got this cone thing I set it on top of. It just allows me to really get out there, take what I'm doing, channel my energy and my focus into one very hard task, and sit there until I do it. And it's been proven effective for the PTSD and the service-related issues that I've dealt with. I went over the desert to fight for this country's freedom. I should be able to have it alone in my own house. I'm asking to be permitted to use any small piece of equipment related attachments. If I go out and rent one, for example, and I'll be repairing some fence, I don't want the city to come in, take a picture of me running a fence post-hog and say, oh, that's a business, because it's clearly not. I am doing only what it takes to, you know, keep my property, and that's it. There's no business use out of this. Those letters, every one of those told you guys, there's no business use happening at this property. I'm asking to be able to have up to two of my 3,500 trucks and trailers. I have nine trailers, and I think it's eight trucks now. Those are all stored off-site at my business location. They don't, I'm not sitting here using my house as a launch ramp for my business. It's not happening. That narrative is completely false. I've got a yellow box truck in the backyard. It wasn't an issue before. It does run, it does drive. It was good under the current, or under the zoning before, but now it's evidently, it's an issue to have it parked on gravel back there. I don't know why, but I think it's that the narrative is pushed that I'm running a business back there, and I'm not. Due to two deaths in the family, I really got screwed by my family. Hurt bad. Both of my grandfathers died within a year of each other, and I got stuck with all their things. And every time I go out in that backyard, it just pains me because I'm just, I'm really pressured because I've got all these things that were their effects that I need to get rid of, and I need to do so in a way that honors them. Something like a pallet that they didn't touch, that they didn't work on, that's, that can go bye-bye. But if there's something that I know that my grandfather's hands touched or something, or a project that we worked on together, or something that they drew up, that they've got the pieces, parts there for, that I'm going to put them together and make them work, that I have a direct use for, that hurts. And there's been things that I've went back there that I know that they were the ones that put that effort into, that I've donated. I donated one for a 4H project for a guy, gave another one away to a neighbor because he needed a riding tractor. These are, these are things that pain me. They are, they are the last effects that my grandfather's passed down. And the way that I got screwed by my family, I hope none of you ever have to experience that. I'm asking for a year just to get rid of these effects. There's no business going on there. This is me relocating those effects and getting rid of them. And yes, I'm guilty of taking some pallets from my business, spins and whatever, from my business, and storing that stuff on them. But it's not like I'm sitting there with price tags on stuff like, I'm going to sell this, or I'm going to sell that, or whatever. These are not auto parts. These are tractor and equipment parts, and the city has been pressing all along on trying to run a junkyard. Those letters told you guys how frustrated my neighbors were when they read that. There's not a junkyard. I am not generating EMS calls. I am not generating fire hazards. I am not generating noise. I am not running torches. I'm not bringing car crushers in there. I'm not doing junkyard things. These were my late grandfather's things that I'm trying to get rid of. I should be able to enjoy my late grandfather's things. I understand it's a little bit junky back there. It's all in a fenced-in yard. There's nothing anybody can see from the street. The only thing they can see from the street is a licensed, registered vehicle on a gravel driveway, which I should be able to have, and I think that it's a residential vehicle. I don't understand why... And I think that it's a residential vehicle. I don't understand why it would need to conform to a commercial. So I did go to, to the, the process to even get to this board requires you to ask for zoning. You can't just go to this board and say, hey, board, I have this or whatnot. They make you go through this process and they drag you through the mud and they bring in your neighbors and then they, they give out these comic cards. These people don't attend your, your neighborhood meeting. They don't know what's going on. The use that, the use that they're, the description of proposal, um, by the city was uh, use of property for a junk and salvage yard business of outdoor equipment, storage and recycling slash salvage and junkyard. I am not a junkyard. I'm not in that business. I am not a business running out of my house. My business is over on northeast twenty-second Street. If somebody has a question about that, I'm happy to answer what I do and how I make my money and it's better than out doing half the things probably people my age are doing nowadays. I'm just trying to live my life. I'm just trying to enjoy my place. The city staff are mentioning, uh, stuff stored in the privacy fenced-in backyard. Nothing in the front of the operable box truck in the photo. Has no signage on it. Uh, parts of vehicles they mentioned were components of DIY projects and affecting my late family members. Many of them tractor and equipment parts. City has repeatedly, even up to present day, asserted that I'm using my home as a business. This is categorically false and an unsupported claim. There's no signage or social media posts advertising the use of my home as a business. No evidence of increased or unusual traffic to my home document. There's no noise complaints, fire, EMS responses or evidence of industrial hazards at my home. Further, three neighbors in closest proximity, the, there's four letters there. One of them moved out of the property across the street from me. One of them is the current neighbor in that property across the street from me. The other two are the neighbors directly to the north of me. He wrote letters obviously expressing all these things. You guys saw what the letter said. I would not be foolish enough to ask this board to grant me a use variance and then turn around and use it, try to use it for a, a, I'd be right back in here. And that would be the end of the principal's office.
We're getting real close to the 10 minutes.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, if we've got questions, that doesn't count in the minutes, but if you could kind of wrap it up here in the next minute or so.
By stipulating that I can't use my property for commercial use, this board can preserve the character and the spirit of my property's current zoning while granting me the, the use, while granting my request. The variance I'm asking for clearly will not permit myself as the owner to use, to pursue any profitable use of my property. There's, allowing the stipulated items for legitimate purposes I've requested and granting me the reasonable time I'm asking for to come into compliance simply provides a recognized use of my property that is within the confines of my home's zoning. Clearly granting this variance will not be contrary to public interest, allowing me to keep in, keep the tools to clear the snow off my two driveways, utilize my truck trailers for residential use, store previously acceptable small running box truck. Given the time to come into compliance should have no negative impact and it's plainly obvious that owing to special conditions, a literal enforcement of the regulation will result in unnecessary hardship. I didn't ask for any of this on me and I wouldn't want it on any of y'all. And if one of my neighbors was in the same position, I'd be up here imploring you guys to support them.
Okay.
Sorry I ran over there.
That's okay, Keegan. You, you're patient to wait today. We, we try to give certainly everybody there a lot of time and be reasonable. Uh, but to kind of keep things moving here, uh, and also to get some questions on the table. Will you take a few questions?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to.
Okay. Anybody want to start off?
Hey, Keegan, it sounds like you've got some stuff that you recognize doesn't belong there.
Yeah. I want to get that out of there.
And, and what kind of a timeline do you feel like is realistic for you to do that?
I asked the board for one year and I think I can get it out in six months. The reason I'm asking for more time than I needed is last year I was hospitalized. A family member had felt that my mental condition was unstable and I still to this day didn't feel like it was. But I was taken away from what I do for a month by that. So I'm asking for a year, but if I can and I, if this weather clears up or something and I'm able to, I'll get it out of there in three months.
So you, you say by January first, twenty-twenty-four?
Yes.
And I, I don't know what all is back there. I don't know how much of it's yours and how much of it is stuff that you've, you know, inherited from.
It looks like a lot of stuff, but it's all on pallets. So for example, I might have a, a three-point blade that was here. I might have a mower that was here and I might have, so it takes up this huge footprint.
Sure.
But what I need to do is go through it and say, this is something I could donate or reach out to people, especially with the spring coming up. That's kind of when people start doing their four-H projects and getting those things slated. I can reach out to these smaller schools and say to the, you know, the shop teachers and stuff, hey, this is something that maybe you could as a class rebuild or whatever. So I can donate those items so that my grandfather's legacy can breed. If it's just a piece of metal, something that, that they didn't touch or nothing, then, but I need the time to go through it without having the snow on top of it.
And twelve months is adequate time for you think, you think you could do that? And I get the weather.
Yeah, twelve months.
Okay. Sounds like you got some fun to do.
Certainly try.
So Keegan, we, I, I don't know if this was made clear. I know you're the applicant here, but, uh, you own this property?
I own this property.
And how long generally have you owned the property?
I've owned this property for, since I was nineteen.
All right. So prior to twenty-eighteen, so you got a use vari, or, uh, you, you, you got permission from this board in twenty-eighteen to build some accessory buildings, like your garages.
Consent and it, and I,
Right, right.
built accessory buildings and I kept, you know, kept everything in them up until now.
And I, I'm assuming, and we don't have to dig into this, but with that approval in a residential district at the time, you were told you couldn't use that for any business activities and everything has to be kept inside, right?
Uh, I was told that I can have, that if, if it is residential use, it can be outside the building. But no, there, I have never tried to run it as a business out of there.
Yeah, yeah. So, so there's a condition of no business use on the property to get your extra garages built. You've lived there for a while. Now you talk about your grandfather's stuff. Did your grandfathers live with you at the address?
No.
So then when your grandfather's passed away, which condolences, did you bring the stuff onto your property that they own?
My property.
Okay, all right. And you stated that you own a business on twenty-second Street.
Yes.
Twenty-second Street where and what city?
Northeast twenty-second Street and I don't know if that's actually Ankeny. I think it's actually Pope County.
All right. So, so it's outside of the city of Des Moines?
Yeah.
And what is your business there on twenty-second?
I have a scrap metal sorting operation.
Okay. So you have a scrap metal operation that you operate at another location outside of the city of Des Moines?
Yes.
Uh, do you have any employees beside yourself?
No.
Okay. All right. So, um, so we're here today. You've got an issue with the city's concerns about junk debris equipment. Uh, you have equipment. You have a tandem axle dump trailer. You got a skid steer. The things I could do with that. Why is it so difficult to get that stuff loaded up and out of there? You could either store it legally within, in a proper zoning district, out in the county or in Ankeny. I'm assuming that's commercial or industrial. You could take it for disposal. You could take it to Des Moines scrap metal, uh, actual end user. How come that hasn't been done?
There's a lot, there's a lot of questions there, so allow me to separate them if I may.
Sure. That's quite all right.
The, the first one is we as people bring home the things that we need at home to do at-home jobs.
Okay.
I, the, I had purchased a new skid loader for my business.
Yeah.
That one sits at my business.
Okay.
Um, it is not a tool that is primarily used in my business, but it sits there. So the one that I have stays at home for only snow removal, only running an auger to put, install fence posts, only picking up the debris when the storm knocked it down. So it has a use at my house where it's going to be there.
Okay.
So why, if, if that is the only use that that skid loader sees, why should I transport that off the property back home and all this just to be inconvenienced, have all that diesel fuel burned, all these things? So I understand that, you know, it would be easy for somebody to just from the outside looking in and say, no, he doesn't need this. But I promise you tonight, when all eighty feet of that, uh, road bed is pushed to the end of my driveway, I'm going to wish I had one. I promise there won't be any city employee out there taking the.
If you own a skid steer personally and it's on your residential property and for any other related reason, it's okay to have it there, fine. That is not.
That's what I'm asking this board to recognize. Now I could understand the board having an issue if they had a picture of me loading scrap metals with it, which they don't because it's never happened.
Right, right. But what I'm getting at here now, I'll just break it down here. I look at two things. What is the proposal? And I'm going to ask you to focus on this. The proposal is use of the property for a junk and salvage yard business for outdoor equipment, storage and recycling junk and salvage.
I never asked for that. I never asked for that. That's a narrative the city pushed.
That's the proposal in front of us. The appeal that's related, you would need a variance of the uses permitted in the N-three district.
That, see, and this is contrary to everything that I was given by these guys, which is that I have to come before you guys to recognize those items as legitimate personal use.
You can add, well, we're, we're starting to mix metaphors here, so I'm going to drop down further. It says that you were in violation of the code regarding inoperable, unsafe, unlicensed vehicles, vehicle parts, miscellaneous junk and debris. We have no jurisdiction over that at this board. If you have junk, garbage, debris on a property, you can't come to this board and say, I want to keep my junk, garbage, debris. Those are nuisance issues. This board has no jurisdiction. What we have in front of us is a request for you to operate a junk and salvage yard. If you say you're not operating a junk and salvage yard, but you have junk and salvage materials on your property, then under the nuisance ordinance, you need to take care of that and we are not a safety valve for that. And I, 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 I think I'm within the board's authority to put that on the table as a discussion if I'm saying something that's inaccurate, but, but what I don't want anybody to do, my fellow board members or you, is to be confused about what you're asking us for. You can't ask us to keep unlicensed vehicles and miscellaneous junk and debris.
Vehicle on my property.
Okay.
Everything I have is licensed and is running. The city made this assertion that it's not.
Well, um, so all we have to do is look at what our authority is here. The proposal on the table is to allow use of the property for what would normally only be allowed in an I-two. And as far as a safety valve, you can come and ask the board for consideration, but it's not like mom told me no, grandpa told me no, so I'm going to go ask dad. He'll say yes. That's not how this works.
When did I ever do that?
I'm just explaining that you, you, you said, well, I got denied here. I got denied there. So I was told you're the safety valve.
No, I was told that this is the process I have to go to, to even get before this board. And then I'm told that you guys are the board that's able to clear these items up and say.
We are here to consider it within the law, the ordinance and the facts presented. It's, it's not like P and Z didn't agree with me. Counselor didn't agree with me. I'm going to come here. They'll agree with me. We might, but you have to present the facts and the case. The facts here, your, the proposal is for use as a junk and salvage yard, which would normally be only allowed in an I-two.
I don't want to run junk and salvage yard. I just need.
And if you're not, then we, then, then if we say, nope, we're not going to approve a junk and salvage yard, you can walk out of here today going, yep, they didn't approve a junk and salvage yard. They didn't approve rezoning. Great. You're fine with this board, but if you have any debris, junk and other things not allowed on a, a property in the N-three A district, you still have to deal with city staff on that. We can't help you with that. That's what I'm trying to get down to because this, uh.
I spoke with Eric Lundey directly and, and he told me that I would need to come before this board and this board would have the ability to say, hey, we're giving you one year.
So, so what, well, what, now that's bringing up a different point. The proposal is not to continue it for a length of time or appeal to allow a use for a limited time. Maybe the board would consider that, maybe we won't. But the proposal in front is to allow a zoning use that is not allowed in the N-three A district.
So my, my application never, I never punched in or typed in any of that.
Well, the nice thing is you get the final rebuttal here. So we'll come back around and listen to what the audience thinks. Uh, we'll listen to what the zoning enforcement officer has to say and you'll get three minutes for closing before we deliberate. Okay?
I can appreciate that.
Yeah. So we'll come back around. Um, I don't have any other questions for Keegan. Does anybody else? Okay. Anybody here to speak in support of the applicant? Seeing none. Anybody here to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Anybody in neutrality? Any further questions for staff? Zoning enforcement officer, we may have a question. We may need some clarity. We've got the background on this and, uh, Mr. Jarvis presented his appeal. Is there anything you'd like to add or anything of observations?
So just Eric Lundey, zoning enforcement officer. The landscape on this is whether he's taking a dime is not determine whether he's conducting a business. Okay?
Right.
It's more about what's the nature of the impact of what's happening on the property and if that's in a nature of being commercial or industrial, then we classify it within the way our code defines these things. Junk and salvage yard would be one of those. Outdoor, uh, equipment and material storage would be another one. So certainly I think the board could, um, allow him to modify his request to outdoor, you know, equipment and material storage. Either way, they're both going to require, you know, he would have had to exhaust his remedy of seeking industrial zoning to begin with. You know, whether that would be I-one or I-two, depending on how, you know, how limited it is. His initial violation was based on, you know, junk and debris and outside storage of equipment. Now again, it's not our burden as enforcement to show that this is tied to a business directly.
Right.
It's whether or not the preponderance of it is of a nature that's not customary or incidental to a one household use.
Yep.
Certainly we enforce on other, you know, properties throughout the city in the same fashion. We, you know, a box truck is not a, a vehicle that's customary or incidental to the residential use of your property, which is the principal use. So, um, you know, we enforce on the box trucks, whether there's advertising on it or not, you know, and that they're using it for personal use or not. It's not a type of vehicle, um, that would be customary or incidental to the residential use. So then we enforce on that as a, as a, uh, commercial activity. Whether it's actually a commercial, uh, enterprise or not. Although, and, and there is some element of, you know, his commercial enterprise is registered with the U.S. Department of Transportation and it's addressed here. He can have his home office out of his home.
Yep.
That's not what's in question here. It's what's getting stored outside. I have the ability to show photos from the original notice of violation under chapter one thirty-four that, you know, clearly show a lot of things. Again, uh, does that, does the average residential property owner have a skid loader to cut out the ice at the end of their driveway? I don't think so. So.
Right.
So it comes down to that determination of where it fits into the code. And, and the board is the safety valve and has that discretion, so. Yes.
Can he have a box truck on his property?
We would enforce on that as a, as a, a vehicle that wouldn't be allowed to be parked on his property.
If that was his regular vehicle, he drove around town rather than a car, that.
I think we've been consistent. Yeah. I mean, as an enforcement, how are we to know if that's their way that they get around town? We don't.
Well, yeah, I know. I'm just, I'm asking a question because is it, can he not have a skid steer loader on his property? If it's, if he uses it to drive around.
I think if it was inside a building, I don't think we would get too, um, worried about it as a personal possession. If it was kept outside, then it becomes, it gets into that classification of outdoor storage of equipment, which is more customary to a business of like landscaping or contracting business.
If it's not a business, you're, you're telling me he can't have a, if he, if he wants to drive that around his backyard, because that's how he wants to spend his time, you're saying he can't do that? And keep it there. I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, I'm saying that that can't be kept on his property and that's the way we've consistently enforced. If I, you know, liquidated a business tomorrow and put all of it in my backyard, I can't do that.
No, well, I, I'm just asking about the stuff that he said he doesn't use for his, I'm not, I don't want to argue with you. I'm just saying. The stuff that he says he doesn't use for business, that he keeps on his property, which he's, and then he's, then, and he, and he did admit he's got stuff there that doesn't belong there that he would get rid of. He just, he's, he wants us to give him some time to get rid of it. I'm just trying to understand what he can and can't have there. Aside from the stuff that he said he's going to get rid of.
He, he really can't have any kind of a vehicle that would be too heavy to go over the road that accesses his property.
Which doesn't sound like he has any of those.
Well, a box truck would be, anything over twelve, twelve thousand gross vehicle weight is going to fall into that.
Well, Eric, please, please don't address staff or the board outside of your turn.
That's, that's like a.
And, and I would say if we don't have the discretion to say this guy can do it because it's his personal. because it's his personal truck, versus something over there.
Okay. I think we generally get what you're telling us. I think it's our job to soak that in quickly.
Right.
I want to move on.
If you mind?
That's fine, and while you do that, I want to ask clarification thing. Let's forget about skid steers, tandem axle trailers, big trailers, big trucks, box trucks. If somebody has junk, debris, yard waste, tires, salvaged building materials, et cetera, that would be considered junk and debris, this board does not have the ability to override that and say, "No, Eric, we don't think that's junk, debris, garbage, take a hike." We can't do that, can we?
You can grant it as a use that allows the storage of that. So, that's where we're at. I mean, this has been cleaned up under junk and debris and nuisance, you know, under health and safety before. Now, we started pursuing it as, as a use that is because of how long this is occurring on the property, so.
Okay.
That's kind of next.
So, then we're right back to a use variance to operate a junk and salvage yard, which is the proposal.
That's the overall scope that covers the spectrum of what he's doing. So, this is the, this is the notice of violation, and I don't know if you want to label it as an exhibit outside of the standing court, but it's in, it's on record with the city. Date of inspection, March 21, 2022. With every notice of violation, we add the photos from the inspection. So, I'll scroll through those quickly. If you want me to stop, if you want to move, feel free to do that, and I can... And of course, Mr. Jarvis does have rebuttal, so he, you know, he's free to respond to any of these, and I'll help scroll through them again if he needs to address these specifically. So, that was the... That was the inspection that sort of triggered this process to begin with, and so, we're to the point where if he wants to continue to keep this, whether it's for a temporary period of a year or permanently, he has to come in front of this board for a use variance. So, my understanding is he's expressing that he wants a temporary period to give him time to get a lot of this moved off of here, but that he may still, if he doesn't get the permission to also keep some of this equipment, that might still be a problem down the line if he's, if it's only for temporary.
Okay. And Eric, I did want to comment on one picture. I see what looks like a large trailer dump box that's like 70 degrees in the air. Is that what I'm looking at?
Yeah.
And that's on the property?
Yes, that's in that rear yard.
Okay.
Was this from your inspection in March, Eric? Those photos?
Yeah, so if you look at the...
Those are about nine months ago.
Yes, and so, since that time, he's been very good about trying to, you know, do the steps to come into compliance. So, you know, he filed a rezoning application and has gone through that process and with planning zoning in the council, and so that's what has gotten him to this point, because his next remedy is to seek use variance.
Okay. I'm going to ask you one final question. If you do determine there's junk and debris on a property, and somebody is making a good faith, fairly timely effort to address that, do you usually press it that, "Oh, well, you got to get rezoning?"
So, usually, the, kind of the, kind of first offenders, that's more covered under the health and sanitation side, and certainly, they have some discretion if there's a 30-day window or something that they have to clean it up. If they see progress, they might extend that.
Okay. All right, that's all I'm asking. Okay. All right. Thank you, Eric.
And I'll leave this up here.
Sure, cool.
If you have some questions.
All right, so Keegan, you get to close this out. You've got up to three minutes to present, oh, oh, wait, but before you do that, I want to have Gary just address some clarity on something, and Keegan, I think that'll be helpful for all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to, a lot of the discussion that we're hearing, it kind of brings up two separate issues, and so, what I was hoping to remind the board was kind of the role of the board and the question that's before the board today, because we're hearing a lot about enforcement and questions about whether, what's allowed, what constitutes junk and debris, that sort of thing. The issue before this board today is whether to grant a use variance, and if so, under what conditions potentially, if the board wanted to do that. Even if this board grants that variance, the question of enforcement and what constitutes junk and debris and outdoor storage and that sort of thing, that's a separate issue that won't be resolved necessarily by this board or its decision. And so, I think, you know, the issue that's before this board is whether the variance is warranted under the provisions in the city's code. The other issue that I think, because we're talking about this use variance for junk and debris or what, you know, I think, I think without putting conditions on it, then any use within that would be permitted if the board were to grant that variance. So, again, just wanted to clarify, or distinguish those two questions for the board.
So, Gary, and I was, I meant to address this. So, when the question was asked, wouldn't it require site plan and so forth? Not automatically unless you make it the condition, because essentially, he's asking for what he has here. So, I think if you're inclined to grant it, you probably need to put stipulations if you want a site plan and meeting certain conditions with landscaping, that type of thing.
All right, I thank you both. Gary, thank you for that, and Eric, thanks for the clarification. All right, Keegan, yes, now you can come back up. You've got three minutes to help close this out, and then we'll deliberate.
All right, now, I'm left with like more questions than answers as to how to even begin to tackle this, because I'm going to be quite honest with this board, I never had a health, safety, junk and debris people. It's always been code enforcement. They've told me it's state a code enforcement case, and this is the remedy that it goes to. So, I have been bamboozled, for lack of a better way to put it. I'm in the principal's office here, and I'm saying, "Hey, I'm trying to admit to what I've done," you know, "and not what I haven't, and just please, you know, grant me some mercy to come back into compliance." It sounds like if I'm understanding what's going on here, the remedy that this board can give me is to grant me a one-year use variance, even though I have no intention of using that commercially. You'll have a good faith word, I know if everybody gave you their word, nine out of 10 people's word would be garbage tomorrow, but you'd have my word if you granted me a one-year use variance, that I wouldn't use this commercially, that I would reduce the stuff in my house. And I don't know if you guys can say, "We can stipulate, we'll give you a durable use variance that stays for the lifetime of the property, but the stipulation on it is we're allowing you to have a skid loader, we're allowing you to have the trailers, we're allowing you to have the excavator, and nothing else." And those is the remedy that I am actually looking for from this board, and I think it's a very commonsensical thing. I think it's what my neighbors are asking for, and I think it's in line with the spirit of the city and what we're trying to accomplish as far as, nobody wants to live next to a junkyard. I certainly don't want to be that person. I realize I've got a bunch of junk in my trunk, if you will, it's all in the fenced-in backyard. I want it out of there. I honestly want to sell this property and move to a more rural area where I can maybe spread my wings a little bit. And my intention is not to junk up the city. I think if you guys can give me a one-year use variance on, in the way it sits, to allow me to store those things outside, say, "We'll allow you to store this, there won't be a site plan required," I think that that would suffice, because to my knowledge, health and safety has not came in to start enforcing on anything. And I've not, I have not in my entire time of owning this property ever had health and safety come in and take any junk or debris off this. This thing started in, in March of this year, and I've talked to them about compliance and how I can come into compliance and how I can get that time to do so, and this is where it led me to. So, I do apologize if I'm in the wrong venue, but this is the best information that I was given, and I got to do what I can with what I got and try to see it through to a resolution.
All right. You're right at three. Good job. All right, we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation. Any initial thoughts, board members?
Sounds like he wants to clean it up, so I don't have a problem if we put a timeline on that. And then, I just need to understand what he can. And my question, Gary, about if I want to park a skid loader in my driveway, because I like to drive it up and down my driveway, what I'm understanding is I can't have it there, even though it's not related to my business.
Well, we're focused on one, and I don't mean to interrupt.
That was what my clarification was with everything, because I'm like, I get the junk, no, but I get the junk, but this guy also uses this stuff recreationally.
We keep talking about one skid loader here.
No, but, okay.
There's tandem axle trailers, there's cube trucks, there's all kinds of stuff. If somebody had one skid loader in their backyard parked nicely, I would guess they probably wouldn't get in trouble, even though it's not customary or incidental, but this has gone so far overboard.
No, and he wants to get rid of this junk, so let's just figure out what he has to get rid of.
Okay.
The skid loader's been brought up a bunch, that's why I wondered, can he not even have it there? So, if I led this conversation off track, my bad, but I'm trying to understand what's going on.
There's more than one skid loader at hand here. We saw the pictures.
He doesn't even want to be here.
Right, right.
It's, I mean, so, but, we are where we are, so, if we can help define what needs to get out of there, and he's got to define time that everyone can live with.
Right.
Let's figure that out. Plus, it's snowing like crazy.
Well, this issue did not start with this board. I'm not saying he misrepresented that with his closing statements here, but this issue started with the city issuing a nuisance notice on the property, along with probably a notice of zoning violations. Rather than deal with it, we've had the driest year on record, the nicest weather on record. Obviously, he's got equipment and abilities with his professional background to deal with this. Rather than work on it, get it cleaned up, what he has chosen to do is seek every avenue he can to justify what he's doing. He went to P&amp;Z Commission, they said no. Then he went to the council, they said no. We're the last stop. We weren't the first stop. We haven't been controlling the ball. But now, he's here today, and what's in front of us, the proposal is to use the property for a junk and salvage yard business for outdoor equipment storage, even if he says he's not got a business, the activities on the property, they're not customary or incidental with Beaverdale or Easter Lake or even Indianola Avenue. They're not. And as much as he's a nice guy, and I'd like to help everybody, we've got our lane, we've got our authority, character of the neighborhood, impact to a neighborhood, property values, the whole nine yards. There's not, the mobile home court's now gone that was across the street. There's going to be a nice development there of mixed-use, mixed-income housing. So, as much as there were some complaints about Indianola Avenue, there's been a lot of investment there, and there's going to be more, and he can be part of that. But I just think we're kind of, we're just nibbling around the edges here. Do we want to grant a use variance to permit what would be called a junk and salvage yard in an N-3A neighborhood district? That's what the question is, and I'm not comfortable with that. And I don't think it's our job to extend deadlines on things and force staff to go out and do further work. He's had nine months to go, "Oh, this is an issue. Yeah, I think I'll get on it." And maybe he has, but the hearing's closed, and everybody had their chance to have their say. So, I'm just, I just don't like any part of this. Well, I'd like to hear what the four others of you think. And Justin, do you just want to make a statement now?
Chair, you know, I was not present for most of the testimony today or the evidence given, so I'm going to be abstaining on this one. Thank you.
Marla's?
Okay. It's been going on for a while, and I'm not comfortable giving him a variance.
I was misunderstanding then, because I think the city said that he has been doing everything he can to be compliant. Didn't he say that he's been above and beyond, working with things to get it taken care of before? Did I misunderstand that?
Perhaps I misunderstood it, but the application on the table is to still have a variance for a junk and salvage yard, which would not be allowed in an N-3A neighborhood district. So, you have to decide if you want to allow that use. And by looking at the pictures, it would appear that there were still, there's still concerns with the use of the property that is not customary or incidental. Like Gary said, we aren't here to do nuisance ordinance.
So, if we're not going to grant that, then we can give him a timeline to get everything I guess my question is, I don't want to grant this request, and I don't think he was here seeking that. Maybe he was, I don't know. I think what we need to do then is, if we're going to make a motion to deny the request, let's give him a timeline and tell him to get it cleaned up and move on.
Well, see, cleaned up, or what? Or discontinue the storage of vehicles that are not customary or incidental?
Yeah, let's tell him what has to go, and not, let's not beat around the bush and say, "This stuff can't be here." I'm not trying to defend him to say, "Let's let him have his toys." Let's just help him understand, that can't be there regardless. Sorry.
Can we put enough clarity in something like that, that it's, that it's clear for both him, as well as meeting the intent of the city ordinance for a timeframe?
I don't think that that's something that this board can do, and I want to clarify, that goes back to the issue that I was saying about earlier, which is like, you know, you've got the issue of enforcement?
Right.
And that issue can be litigated somewhere else, not here.
He's just asking for a timeline, that's the only reason I'm, if you have help people, giving them time to get stuff cleaned up.
So, I think if you wanted to do that, it would have to be in the form of a very narrowly drawn use variance, if the facts that were before the board today supported that.
Okay.
I think that that's the way that you could get there, if that's what you wanted to do, but just like saying he's got more time to clean this up, I don't think that is within this board's purview.
And that's the way that it was conveyed to Mr. Jarvis from staff's perspective.
Okay.
The board had the ability to give a limited variance.
Well, we can tackle this a couple ways. Sometimes motions don't make it, sometimes they do, but I'm going to make a motion to deny the requested zoning variance. With the evidence and testimony presented here, the variance test is high. The subject property, he lives there, it's zoned residential. The subject property can yield a reasonable return for the use that is permitted now. It's residential. It's got value as a house. Secondly, the issue here is not related to the land in question. It's his stuff, it's his doing, there's no other general conditions in the neighborhood that would say, "Well, yeah, this really should be industrial." No, this is a residential district. It was in the recent rezoning. The city looked closely at uses. That's why it has the N-3A zoning. If we would approve this, this is an I-2 use, is a junk and salvage yard. Even if somebody says that's not what they want to do, that's what the proposal is, that kind of use would alter the essential character of the area in question. Neighbors might think somebody's nice, but I'm not interested in spot zoning in Des Moines in the middle of a residential area on a major corridor that has a bunch of what looks like industrial equipment sitting around on it. I'm just not. So, that's what my motion is based on. I'm curious if there might be a second for that.
I will second.
All right, second by Marla's. So, we'll go ahead and take a vote on that, as it stands, to deny the requested variance. All those in favor to deny the requested variance, raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five. All right, so motion carries 5-0. Keegan, you're a nice guy. I would just encourage you to work with staff to get things in shape out there. You've got some talent, you've got some abilities, you can get it done.
I'm certainly trying, I just need them to work with me, and they still miss the bat, and so more evidently, it's, I don't know what we're doing here.
All right, keep a haulin', that's what I would say. All right, that was item seven. I believe we have one more item on the agenda for this evening, a use variance request at 1626 East Park Avenue.
Mr. Chair, I'm the board, Bert Ross, deputy planning administrator for the city of Des Moines. I'm going to kind of go off script on this. I'm going to kind of go off script on this one and try to wrap it up. I see the weather outside is getting bad. And the public information office sent me an email saying we should wrap up because there's a winter warning or winter storm warning out there. But the request is for a used variance. Staff has recommended approval of this used variance, and the applicant is in agreement with all of the conditions that staff has recommended. We've recommended 13 conditions. They're wanting to use an existing detached garage for automotive repair. If you remember, the board actually granted this for a temporary period back in 2018. That has since expired, so they're, I guess, subject to getting a new zoning approval. The new code didn't allow for auto repair to be considered as a home occupation, so they had to go through the rezoning process, have that denied, and then come before this board to get a used variance. So like I said, staff has recommended approval, subject to these 13 conditions up here. And the applicant is in agreement with these 13 conditions. So I guess I'll leave it at that if you have any questions for me.
Is this the applicant, same applicant we approved before?
It is.
And prior to that, didn't we also give a previous approval for like a little wood chipping business?
There was a tree trimming business, and the building was constructed for that many years ago for the tree trimming business.
Yeah, and that guy lived there. And this guy, he lives there too?
Right.
So this is like a quote home occupation?
And that's what a recommendation for approval is based on. It's a, they have two accessory structures on the property, one of them being this 1,536 square feet structure where the business is entirely taking place. So we feel that there is a hardship in utilizing that accessory structure given the size.
Okay. All right. I think Tom has to check out. If I could get him to stay five minutes. Okay, you're a good man. Take him on for the team. Okay, yeah, yeah, no, we'll help you out too. All right, any other questions for Bert? Okay. All right, thank you, Bert. All right, applicant or representative of the applicant? You have up to 10 minutes. You can use all 10 if you want.
Try not to take.
If you don't want to, you don't have to.
My name's Sheldon Roney, 1626 East Park Avenue. Like he did say, I did come back in 18. I was granted the special use, had to jump through some hoops to get to you guys again. In those, well, now, last four years, there hasn't been one complaint. Actually, just got a neighbor to email over a copy in for this. I didn't get it in time to get it on here, of course. Like I said, there's not been one complaint in four years. I don't really know what else to say about it.
You mow your property, it sits far back from the road, correct?
Yep.
You've got some fencing that screens the vehicles?
Yeah, it's kind of slow. I wasn't going to try to take all day trying to figure it out. So on here somewhere, there's a, there should be a photo of the front property.
That's probably a different document that they'd have.
It's kind of slow to scan.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He can help you. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, okay.
So this is the front facing north, where you can see the garage there. There was a privacy fence, as you can see, in the process of getting it put back up.
And you had a permit for that, right?
At the beginning, I didn't. I was just fixing, like, it was all rotted wood. But there is a permit. It was permitted. I didn't get it inspected yet because of all the weather and all this other.
Just a good learning lesson for others, always check for fence permits.
Yeah, there was some, definitely some fine lines in there that I didn't realize.
Okay.
Like you know, this is Park Avenue. I think the DOT registered 11,000 cars a day. That was shocking to me, even though living there. But I sit so far back. So it doesn't really change maybe two or three vehicles a day, the traffic in front. What else we got? I think I was going the wrong way. So there should be a photo with the outline and kind of the site plan.
Yeah.
I don't know if you can see the mouse up there. So these are marked trees, and there's actually eight-foot shrubs that divide in between the actual garage and the neighbor's house.
So you have screening, landscaping, take care of the property, right?
Yep. So I keep up on all that. I've never had a complaint, like I said, whether it's just residential concern or business concern.
Got you. And you're okay with the 13 conditions presented here?
Yes, yes.
All right. Okay.
I don't think there's anything else.
Any questions? Okay, all right, you can sit down.
Thank you.
Anybody wishes to speak in support, they'd have up to five minutes.
I won't take five minutes.
There's no pressure here.
No, thank you. Thank you, board chair. Andrew Collings, 625 Pleasant View Drive. I don't live in the neighborhood. I'm a friend of Sheldon. I'm probably his biggest customer. He, his service, his business is much cheaper than anywhere else you're going to find. He helps his neighbors in a lot of different ways, fixing things, doing a lot of help with stuff. 11,000 vehicles a day, that comes from the 2016 Iowa DOT counts. That's what I told them. I send the link to staff for proof of that. But it is very busy and it is very loud. I will say that Sheldon has not had any complaint with neighbors. No one's reported to the city. And I will point out that compared to what we've seen today, that's in short supply. So I just wanted to register my support for him, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. All right, anybody else speaking in support, in opposition, neutrality? Any further questions for staff? I don't think we have anything, Eric. Okay. This is up to you and Tom right now. Tom, we'll be happy to walk out with you. Okay. All right, okay. Tom, if you need to go, we've still got five of us. Be safe on the way home.
Eric Clendy, zoning enforcement officer. Just to kind of recap, this is coming to you now because of the change in the ordinance. The ordinance, it used to be something that could be a home occupation, considered as a matter of, you know, right, essentially if they met the criteria for home occupations.
Yep.
That changed, so there was clear direction on the council's part to treat these types of businesses differently and not through home occupations. Now, this has been in continuous use, so you can look at that differently, of course. But I can tell you from an enforcement perspective, these types of uses are problematic throughout the city.
Yes.
And the other thing to understand is if you give this as a used variance, he could sell it to another operator down the road that may not be a great customer that everybody loves.
But the conditions would still apply?
Yes, the same.
And I'm thinking that's exactly what happened.
So make sure, yeah. Keep the conditions that are recommended, and you know, the big thing here is whether we can bring them back to you.
Okay. All right. All right, we're close. All right, so we'll close public portion, go to board deliberation. Familiar with this property, seen it. It's been kept well. It's moved through a couple owners. There's plenty of conditions here. I'm a southsider. You don't notice this. Totally different thing than anything else we saw today here. I'm fine with it.
It's the variance test, so.
Yeah. Okay, I'll make a motion. Dave seconds. All those in favor granting the variance? Say aye. Tom? Always the funny guy with the last laugh. Thank you, Tom. Have a safe trip home. All right. Motion carries six to zero on that one. That didn't happen just because you're last and we're going long, so. Yeah, so, all right, gentlemen, you'll get a copy of that next week about this time, our decision in order. What other business? Frank, we had something else you wanted to cover? I think I mentioned, let's mention that. It'll be brief. What was it?
We need to approve the meeting minutes. And then there was the item regarding the alcohol memo.
Yes.
Regarding alcohol, the criteria for separation distance, that did go to council and that's been referred to city staff to investigate for the next code amendment.
So council didn't say, that's crazy, throw it in the trash can?
They did not.
Okay, I'm glad to hear. All right, would there be a motion to approve the minutes from anybody here last meeting? Marla, Justin, all in favor? Aye. All right, if there's no other business, this hearing is adjourned. And I told you guys to be prepared for a four-hour meeting.